Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Salute.
The second?
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, stick your hand up. Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Same sign, motion carries. Do we have any, Selena, is there anybody that's signed in? Blake?
Go ahead.
Alright, we will get that and move on to item D, informational items.
So I, this is just, you know, kind of providing you guys some information about some of the things we do in the district. This list here, um, this actually is a list that's grown, we've grown from almost nothing in the last five years. These are all of the courses that offer dual credit in both college and high school that we offer here onsite at the high school. There will be a couple more in the STEM that hopefully that Rick Follett's working a couple more articulations for some computer science. And then we also have teachers applying to do biology and US government. So we're hoping to add some more. Um, I'm still, I, I've been able to come up with kind of the plan and what's possible as far as us offering an AA here on campus. Remember thirty credits have to be through CBC, they have to have thirty credits there, but they could be thirty credits they take online, so don't have to drive anywhere. They, they can be here on campus. It's totally doable. Um, we have way more than we even need for that, so um, it's pretty exciting. There's a lot of opportunities for kids. Kids are walking out of our doors now with a lot of college credit added into their college university, so. Just wanted to, just the information.
Thank you.
Now, one quick thing, some classes we don't offer every year. Um, it is of course based on demand, so sometimes we don't have a demand for a Spanish four or something like that. Um, we do have our, um, is it aerobic walking, the one you need to get some? So our teacher that taught that, what moved, left, and so that one we have, we, we actually have another teacher applying. So we didn't offer that this year because the teacher was teaching it left and we couldn't get someone qualified soon enough. So we left it on the list, but it'll come back on the list when we get a teacher qualified again.
And I want to add just the piece about the teacher qualified. They actually become um, an employee of the university in which they work, so they have to go through the application for that university and be accepted under those rules. Um, and those, and each department, much like an English department or a history department, has their own standards on which they
Application rules.
Application policies, who does the hiring process, what board they sit on, well, all of those pieces. So we really don't control that. We just try to have the minimum qualifications met before we pass them off.
And you might look at it and go, why don't you do all these different schools and why not just one? Well, it's because like some of them, some courses we can get at Eastern, though we can't get at Central. And there are some courses we can get at University of Washington, we can't get at Eastern or Central. They all kind of offer, some of them are the same, they all order, offer English. But there's a lot that are, like, certain universities have in their program and other ones don't. So it's better for us to kind of cast a broad net, use CBC, use Walla Walla, UW, Central and Eastern. Um, because those are courses we can't get sometimes at the other universities. So we start out with Eastern and Central, um, and then we just keep expanding. The community colleges are, um, like CBC are starting to move away from the kind of the CBC, the model we've had with CBC where it's dual credited, but it's not college and the high school. And there, that's one of the reasons Rick is moving more courses towards Walla Walla, because they're using the college and the high school model, which is a little cleaner and easier. Kids don't run into as many challenges with the credits that
So dual credit, I see some faces going, okay, so dual credit is when you say you get CBC credit and high school credit at the same time. College and the high school says you're getting college credit on a college transcript and that works in a Washington State college.
And it counts for high school.
And it counts for high school credit. The difference is if you do dual credit, your credits are only good at CBC. Does that make, does that make?
And we want their credits to do good everywhere, as many places as possible. So, um,
The dual credit, just to clarify. That is not going to transfer if they go to school somewhere else?
Correct.
But the college and the high school will.
And the college and the high school, it has a guarantee in Washington State. Some out of state colleges will accept them and some will not.
And I know we've had questions about AP. We really only offer one AP class here because AP is a one test, like it's one and done. Like if you don't do well on the test, you, you don't get the credit. Even if you've done great in the class all year long, whereas college and the high school, you get the credit. But every AP test, any kid can take any AP test they want. So you can always take the AP test, but there's a lot of high stakes in a one test opportunity. So, um, lots of high schools are kind, have moved towards, college and the high school has less of a, if you don't do well on this test, which some kids don't, um, you don't get the credit, so.
Is the AP credit for transferable though? Every university will take an AP credit?
Every, no. Every uni- universities get to decide if they take it or not. It's not automatic.
Can you talk about how the kids are getting educated about getting certified transcripts from each school? So you have to get one from Walla Walla, Central, to go, when you apply to college, to get that to transfer. So they're getting that information.
I can talk a little bit about that. I recently had a, uh, that situation. I'm a running start student at YBC. And they, um, the running start advisor is a little bit rude. Cause, and she, she called me like, um, preppy, because I'm from Prosser. I was like, oh, okay. But anyway, um, I had to order a transcript from transcript.com or something like that. Yeah. And I called, uh, CDC to like ask them, like, how do I get my transcript, uh, transferred to YBC? And they were like, you have to go online to this. But they really didn't have much guidance and we don't really get much guidance through our Mustang periods or anywhere else. So I think that's definitely something we could teach.
For sure. And Mr. Bailey was in here. Um, that is sophomores, freshmen, oh, Mr. Funk was hiding over there too. That's, that is another thing. Kids can, they have to have, some of these have prerequisites, some of them don't. But kids actually, some of the, many, some of these classes they can take as freshmen, whereas in running start, you can't start till you're a junior. So that also could give kids opportunity to kind of start with some classes as freshmen and sophomores. And so you're, some kids will try to do that AA, but can't get it all in. Like they, oh, we're almost done, didn't quite finish, gives a little bit more time. But that's something we can definitely work on if people aren't really, if kids aren't understanding as well how to get their transcripts. But every college university makes you order them online now, everyone.
Me, even when now, for, for thirty-five years later, forty years later, I need to order them. They used to come in paper. I still have to do them all online. So there's no calling anybody anymore and saying, send me your transcript.
One question I have, so I know you're, you're working with CBC to get the AA. Um, would that mean that this list would change? Or would, would it just be that they accept?
There'd be a different, so these are all the college and high school courses, but there will be a, like a different list, basically, that shows them. Um, these are the classes that would count for your English. These would be the classes you can choose for your math. These are the classes that you need for humanities and so on. And then these are the options you have for, uh, electives. Um, and so right, just right when I did it before, we even added some courses, we had seventy-five credits of classes that would qualify. Of course, they can only, but it gives some choice, but there is some areas where there's really not a lot of choice. Um, English makes sense, you don't need a lot of choice, um, but, and then the electives, some of, like the C, ironically, the CBC courses that are, like, dual credited, those are restricted electives. So they can only, they can have fifteen credits or restricted electives, so there are some of those things. So they'll have like a list, if you want to get finished, get your AA, these are the things you can take at Prosser High School. These are your choices. This is not a choice, isn't a choice, these are choices. And then they'll have those thirty credits, they'll have to decide that they're going to do, um, online. Right now, we don't have a biology. If they were going to go be a teacher, or they're going, and I said you're about medical field, they need biology. So I know Megan's here, she's working on that. Um, I guess she'd like to be able to teach the college and the high school for biology. Uh, that's one of the hardest ones to get approved, so, um, we're working on it.
I feel good about it.
I know, me too, me too. And different universities are, like, they literally can just say, well, we don't want anybody else, so we're not even going to look at your application. And so the universities don't control it. They let their departments completely control it, so it's in, it's kind of interesting.
That's good news, thank you. Alright, student representative reports. We'll start with you, Jamie.
So I can finally come to regular board meetings because I finished my history night class at YBC, so that's good. Um, and for ASB, I'm the executive business manager and we picked, I think I can share. Um, we picked the Mary Mustang, the, uh, week to be winter wonderland. Um, leadership, uh, the leadership class and ASB both decided on that. And then we're working on senior shirts, so we should have those out by, for sure, like after, winter break or a little after that. And then I think that's pretty much it. And the band concert went really good.
Thank you. No one? Um, to be honest, I didn't have a lot. Um, I could take over for Caitlin's though, she was going to cover sports, um, stuff like that. Uh, girls wrestling had a meet last night, didn't?
Didn't pose goodness he wanted, right?
No.
Yeah, okay, definitely not. Um, um, I went to the band concert, uh, last night as well. That was really fun. Um, getting to hear everything twice was a little weird, but, um, it was pretty fun. I don't, I don't have a lot. Um, we do have a career fair on Friday set up by Ms. Vandegrift. Um, best science teacher ever. Um, no offense to any science teachers. Um, but yeah, so that's happening on Friday. We'll have, I think it's thirty-five, right?
We have up to forty professionals.
Four, yeah, forty, um, ranging from the coroner all the way to like a pilot and stuff like that. We, we asked if they could bring a cadaver, they said no.
Well, we didn't ask, you just requested.
Hey man. You said it'd be cool. Um, but yeah, other than that, that's, uh, that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for Yishemir? No one? And then we'll move on to discussion item number one, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, Crystal Apple Award.
Well, it was a great day today. Um, one of, it's kind of like when you go to kindergarten classroom, it's a fun day. Well, today was a great day because I got to, um, shake the hands of our nominees. Um, our, we had eight nominees and so I got to go out and shake their hands and congratulate them. And then I was able to, um, award our, uh, Crystal Apple Award to Wendy Applegate. Um, she was chosen by her peers or is nominated by her peers and selected by the selection committee. There was like nine or ten people in the room. Um, I'm there as a representative, but I don't vote or have any say in it, so it's all done by their peers. And so we did that. We'll have a big press release coming out and all of the pictures of everybody. I have to say, um, when you see that surprised look on their face when you walk in their class and interrupt instruction and there's tears and excitement. Mr. Bailey was, we, fun, the kids clapped, it was, it's, they, you know that they're, we're doing it for the right reason. So, um, our committee was great and we're going to pass that name. For those who don't understand, we, we have a local and then we pass that name on to the ESD one twenty-three and there's an application packet. And then our goal is that our teacher gets selected for ESD one twenty-three and it goes on to the state for teacher. And so you'll see lots of publications about it in the next week or so. We'll try and how to get it out to all the staff and, and the community newspaper on next Wednesday and website at the same time and everything.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that?
Uh, I did have one. Who are the finals?
You know, I, I don't have the list in front of me. Um, Selena might be able to help me sending me the list. I could read you all the names, but I would hate if I forgot someone.
Okay.
So it will come out in the website and stuff real shortly, but I would have felt terrible if I left somebody off. If I announced it and left one person off, I would feel horrible.
Thanks. Um, moving on to levy update.
Um, you know, it's, it's great. I don't know. Uh, we have, had a levy meeting last night. We had great attendance. On the website has a levy information now. We got our flyer approved. We're working on our social media page. We have our pro committees for both piece, which we'll approve in a little bit. Um, basically it's just good vibe. I would, is what I would say is a good vibe. I think those who were there, um, in the committee could say that it was a good vibe. Um, let's see. So we have to approve that or not, well, I guess approve that. It's an action item tonight. Then those committees, we spoke to Benton County today. They'll get an email that says you have however many days. It is up to two hundred and fifty words. I already have the, um, EPNO committee, one draft for us to look at and kind of go from there. And we're starting hard and heavy January eighth, or right after the first of the year.
Sounds good. Any questions? Alright, hearing none. Uh, that's it for discussion items. We'll move on to action item number one. That's the second reading of policy and procedure forty-two eighteen, language access.
I think Eric told me he would be on, online to.
Yeah, I'm online if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for Eric regarding the policy? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of policy procedure forty-two eighteen, language access.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the second and finals, correct? I don't know, so I'll have to get that right.
We've gotten it every time since we've been doing it.
I know. One of those things that slips my mind. Uh, policy and procedure forty-two eighteen, language asked access. Will need further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, next up would be the consultant service agreement pro management solutions.
Jackson's not here tonight. It's pretty cut and dried. When we run a wrestling event, we have a service that helps us manage what's going on. There's so many moving parts in there. And so this is the consultant agreement just for that.
Let's come out to ASB.
Um, yes. ASB slash athletics, but ASB.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, motion to approve the pro management solution service agreement.
Go here a second.
Second.
Sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Been moved in second to approve the consultant service agreement with pro management solutions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to item three, is out of state travel for the Mustang Thrive.
And come up to the table and visit.
Hi, so I'm Megan Vandegrift. I'm the Mustang Thrive advisor here at the high school.
And I'm Erica Lawson. A few of you guys know me, but I'm the Prosser Thrive project coordinator for their local nonprofit here in Prosser.
So with our Mustang Thrive, um, students, we would like to attend the CADCA national convention in Washington DC. The CADCA stands for the Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America, which recognizes over five hundred groups here across, um, the United States and then also like thirty countries outside of the United States as well. So, uh, we would like to just take three of our students that applied and have shown dedication and, um, commitment to our coalition to attend the national conference where they get the opportunity to network with other students from across the country. They attend sessions and trainings to bring back here to our community so that we can continue to build upon the work that we've already started here. Um, so as far as people traveling, our, um, the Thrive Executive Board approved for three students. It is completely funded by the Thrive organization through grants that they get federally for this type of work. So our three students are Violet Schwab, Bridget Leek, and Michaela Passi, who is a homeschool student. Um, so we're, we're branching out outside of just the high school and reaching community members as well. I would be going along with the students as well as Erica, who's not only the youth coordinator for Thrive, but she is also a district volunteer and has been approved that way, as well as Bertha Montano.
Montano.
Montano from the middle school. She is our, um, advisor down there. And as well as Jay PK, the classer. And then we have, um, yeah, that's a good one. Yes. And so what the, again, the, it would be for one week and we would be at the training, but we also have the opportunity to have these students come face to face with our representative and our senators as well to kind of have their ear on what our community needs as well as what we could continue to do for prevention and building our helping state community here in Prosser. It's a pretty spectacular thing and the students have been phenomenal with what they're able to do and bring back here. If we're able to fill this open, it'll probably be just six or seven times we have taken students.
And they usually, usually you guys come back and the students come back and present what they learned?
Yes.
Did that last year, correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, it was a good presentation too.
Yeah, so sometimes they're focusing on mental health. Um, sometimes they're focusing on different aspects, but the students come prepared and so prepared that we've actually had the executive board for CADCA come to us and ask for our students to present to the whole entire convention as well. So we're pretty proud of our students and the amazing work that they're doing.
When is it?
It would be, um, the very end of January into February. So I believe our travel date is the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-eighth.
Sorry, twenty-eighth of January and we would come back, I believe, the third, second of February. And during that time, we also get the opportunities, um, to visit some of the national monuments and the amazing things that Washington DC does.
Great.
Can you tell about how it impacted the students after they've attended and their work in the community?
Um, how will we, like, so much so that some of the students that have been involved with Thrive continue their work into the college level? Like, we've had students that have been able to see just kind of the impact that they have done and have gone into social, like, mental health advocacy when they attend college. Um, so it's been incredibly impactful, especially carrying it forward if we're able to help the students when they get them, you know, in the middle school or the beginning of high school, what they're able to do over those four years or longer has been impactful on, on as their fellow, um, students and classmates as well.
One of the really cool things about them here is they do play over the last seven to ten years. Um, we've taken a lot of upperclassmen, so juniors, seniors, so they've gone on to graduate. Um, they've got a lot more leadership experience and so, um, they can provide that. Right now, we're a really, um, young club. And so a good majority of our club is, I think we have roughly eight to ten active students. And, um, they're all made up of, um, freshmen and sophomores. And so this opportunity to be able to take three freshmen, well, the knowledge that they learn and that they build upon can then, um, come back and affect the club for the next four years and help to grow, build their leadership skills and then build the leadership skills of their peers and then help to recruit more students, so. We're excited for that opportunity.
Great, thank you.
I had one thing to note, that's just a little difference. On the sheet, it says two Prosser Mustang Thrive students.
Yes, just when we were, went to our executive board for Thrive, they actually looked at our funds and they're like, surprise, we can take one more student. So we, um, we checked back all of our applications and they approved for one more student.
Any other questions?
I should have taken them.
Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve out of state travel for Thrive, Mustang Thrive.
A second.
We've moved in second to approve the out of state travel, uh, for Mustang Thrive. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Have fun.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Alright, next up is, take one for tonight, it's school improvement.
So you received the school improvement plans and, um, Eric, about two, I think almost two weeks ago now. They're in the packet. We also have a one cover, one cover page. I think Brian's dealing with a little something, so I think that's prompted, oh wait, never mind. I'll say Brian's is up first. Uh, they're just going to talk briefly about their goals and give you opportunity to ask, ask any questions you have.
So I apologize, I've got kind of a situation going on, so if I can walk out. Michael, you're up.
Um, school improvement plans, uh, school improvement plans have been, I'm sorry, I'm a little flustered right now.
Do you want to, would you like to wait till then?
No, it's okay, because I want to, this will be important, so. Um, school improvement plans, I just wanted to point out, they're living documents. They're something that we work on over years of time. These are not, uh, usually written year to year. Last time we revised these goals, we revised for, uh, up to two thousand twenty-five, with the hopes that we reach our goals by two thousand twenty-five. Um, so our goals themselves haven't changed much, but the process of achieving those goals, we can add to those in portions of the way as we see that things are and aren't working. Um, so the high school, we're going to explain a little bit because they usually have a, and, um, I'm going to try to avoid that this time. We do have eight goals, they have not changed. High impact goals, high, I, um, I guess, you know, difficult, they're high reaching. Um, attendance is always on there for the high school, so we have achievement goals for ELA and math. Um, our highest populations in, in E is our ELL students and that's a gap that we're trying to close. We're all looking for ways to do that. Um, and we're trying to catch kids early, uh, starting in the ninth grade. A number of things at the district level that we're all trying to do, we've worked on, a multi-tier system with interventions, systems of support and TSS. We're trying to bring those in, to catch kids early. We're thinking about counseling department to try and do a number of things to, to catch kids early, get them the help they need so that we can uh, improve the, the kids' ability to graduate, but, uh, you know, you'd also see, and showing success. Um, to be reached and showing success or, um, one of the big things that, that I love to point out, when you, when you look at state and, and state numbers, you know, a number of people will look at state members and say, this is terrible. Uh, and I'm not here to say that we're great. But when you compare to other districts in the state, uh, throughout the state, um, you're looking at the same thing across the state level. So, um, our goal is to increase those numbers to close that achievement gap. Um, I talked to a board member, um, outside of this meeting and, um, you know, in some areas we've seen, like the ELA and, and math, sometimes you see one, one to two percent is typical growth in our district. We want, that's not good enough. Excuse me, sorry, I've been, I've been asked to move the speed of the microphone closer.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I apologize to all of you online. Um, sometimes typical growth has been one to two percent and in math especially, we're trying to find ways around that. Um, our ELA department, where's jumps? Percent, almost nine percent. Uh, and so those are, those are numbers and that's a, that's a growth that, that we would like to sustain and that's a, you know, a pathway to reaching our goal.
Can I interject just real quickly? Part of the challenge that high school deals with too is that kids know they don't have to pass the test to graduate, whereas they had that as a threat, like you have to pass the test to graduate. But you, it, like, it's the easiest way, like, just pass the test and then you, you met your graduation requirement. But the pressure, I think, isn't there. And I think it's good that there's other alternatives, but some, it also sometimes the kids go, well, this test, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a valid point. Um, but, you know, we're always trying to close that gap. We'd like to see a high percentage, higher percentage of growth so that, you know, you can sustain that and gain ground. One percent growth isn't really gaining ground and one percent growth is, is not the kind of growth that we want. So we want to see a change in that. Um, and, uh, we're hoping that these things, uh, these activities for each goal will help us do that. And, uh, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
What's your, uh, cur- current graduation rate?
Uh, eighty-seven percent. We're close. And there's a number of things, uh, that I learned this year just from, uh, from Ms. Casey, uh, that we're working on at the building level that would probably help our graduation rate just based on reporting issues and how, how we're tracking the students who have left versus the students who are here. Um, so it's, it's part of a learning curve for me as well and, uh, she's helping me through that.
So I'm sorry you had to go first because I have this question about.
So I'm sorry you had to go first because I have this question about all the plans, but I see goals around ELA and math in all of the schools, but no goals around science. Why is that?
Um, the state requires goals around ELA and math for high schools because those are our areas that are tested on the SBA.
So this is a title one improvement plan. So title one is a federal grant program. And they have certain expecta-, just like, like he has a graduation goal, but the rest of them don't. So there's certain requirements of what they expect us to do. There is not a, it doesn't mean he couldn't have that, but he's done what's the required requirements. Kind of the same in the district SIP. We have a lot more goals that we're working on and things we're working on. But the plans, a little, the LCAP is a little bit of a compliance thing because we're working on way more things than are in that end.
We have, I will say this, we have brought that up in our, in our science PLCs. Uh, we, it is a program that we're trying to refill and build back up. We seem to have lost a number of kids from traditional science classes to the agricultural science classes. Uh, we're trying to offer more. We brought back, uh, and we have now a college and high school chemistry class. We have environmental science classes. Uh, we're starting to build that back up. And one of the pieces that we talked about was creating a goal centered around, um, the assessment piece. So that could very well be in, in next year's plan.
And I'm going to expand on that. So we, uh, talked about compliance piece. There's this compliance piece regards to taking the science assessment. If you, I'm embarrassed to say this, but I want it to be on the record. The assessment only says they have to log in. That's really what it says. They have to attempt the test. They log in, answer one question, and that's the only requirement. It's a federal accountability test for eleventh grade. And so what happens is when that message gets told or students learn that, they log in, do that. And it, it has no intrinsic value to, to completing it. And so where we have to work on is, is, and you've heard me, each of you, I've met with you. This is where raising the rigor and academics of the prowess of the individual student and the system is where those test scores will actually raise. Because they'll want to toot their own horn or be proudful of their score.
I think, uh, probably a, um, maybe a more relevant or important goal for the high school would be to increase the number of kids in the courses. And to increase the need for the courses because kids are taking the courses. And that would be a start versus the. Oh, the actual test, yeah.
What are the traditional science class? What are the traditional non-high?
Um, so we have, um, physical science, we have biology, we have, uh, chemistry. We've always had chemistry. Um, we have uh, physics is on there. Um, we added forensics a couple of years ago when Megan came on. Um, but we're trying to bring back the environmental science that we, uh, Mr. Crook is trying to get certified so that he could teach a college and a high school course. Uh, trying to expand those offerings basically. So we have some higher level offerings.
What, what do you think would help bring up the test course? If you could, if you could hire anyone, bring anything in or do anything, but there's no budget restraint?
I think it depends on the test. I think that, uh, I just hear from the state of Wyoming. Wyoming tested one hundred percent of their kids on the ACT. Uh, it was a big deal. It's a college entry test. Um, you guys are aware of the ACT and one hundred percent had to take that for college entry. Uh, we don't have that here in Washington. And now the SBA is no longer a requirement. It's not a requirement to get into college. Uh, it used to be a requirement to graduate from high school. It is no longer. It's one of now nine, I think. Nine, uh, college, uh, our graduation pathways, um, which was revised again this year. And so as long as I, it's not an easy answer and there probably is no answer. Um, you know, and one of the, uh, another pathway to graduation is the ASVAB test, which we just gave to all of our juniors. We're going to modify that and, and, uh, give that to more groups of students next year. Um, but even within the ASVAB, we had students that got a ninety-seven percent, which is knocking it out of the park. And we also had students that got a one and a two percent. So some kids, you know, when you're as, when you're telling kids to take the test and you're requiring kids to come in and sit them down, you're going to see the full spectrum of these kids really want to take it because for whatever intrinsic motivation or extrinsic motivation they have, there are a lot of reasons why kids do well and there are a lot of reasons why kids don't. And so that is the reason for the pathways is because some kids don't connect with, with certain pathways. And so try and open that up and broaden that to make sure you get options for every student to, to graduate. And I think it's a, a bigger picture. Um, I think for us, it's a, it's more a matter, you know, we're trying to prepare kids for life after high school. And that's not always college. And so, um, we want to get kids experience. Uh, we want to have them, yeah, and provide them with offerings. We want them engaged. We want them to be civically responsible. There are so many things that, that we teach at high school, um, beyond just an SBA, a smarter bounce consortium test. Um, and unfortunately, when you're talking about a report card, that's the only thing some people look at. And, uh, that's not always the, the big picture. I had an answer for you.
Yeah, no, um, thi- this is probably, I, I don't mean this to sound the way it's probably going to, but just conversations and questions I've had for Kim and Deanna. But, um, you know, ju- just looking at, you know, school by school test scores, yeah, on, on paper, this thing looks not great. Um, but I, I think this is not to, not to single out a single building, but I'm, I'm viewing this as a, as a district issue. Because we, we, you know, questions about kids moving on, if they're not ready, all of that fun stuff. But if we're honestly like, like we're moving kids from building to building to building and they're not ready. Here's where they end up. So like, like I said, my, my viewpoint, this is a district issue, not just say a high school, middle school. Heights element. Th- this is a district issue that, I mean, hopefully we're all on the same page here to figure this thing out.
I have this note here next to the goal of ninety percent of students graduating on time. And I wrote, but are they ready? How do we know that they're prepared and ready? Are we just graduating them because?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, we do everything we can to prepare them for, uh, for life. Um, you know, we just had a discussion yesterday about registering to vote, you know, and, uh, we have, you know, in our civics class, our, our teachers helping students learn that that's an important, important aspect and, and getting kids to actually register. And that's not something that you would see on a test. That's not something that you would see. But it's a civic responsibility and something that we feel is very important. Um, you know, and there's, there's a lot of those. Um, are they ready? I don't know. The, I, we do everything we can to, to help prepare them, but depending on who you are and what you're looking for and what your, what your indicators are, that can be different depending on how you look at it as well.
Now I'm trying to think like, how do you measure some of those things that aren't measured with test?
It is, and that's, and it's a challenge. You know, we look at, you know, how many kids are, how many, uh, there's an attendance goal here. Attendance is probably, I, I talked to a board member the other day. And that was the big issue. I, I feel like it's the biggest issue we face is how to get kids here daily. Um, and, and that's not just by building. That's, that's every building, uh, not just this district, but across the state and across the country. It is, it is the issue.
Do we hold kids back much?
At the high school level, um, you, I, I don't know that I should call it a luxury. Um, if kids aren't prepared for the next class, they do not move on to the next class. Uh, they have to retake classes in order to be, as long as there's prerequisites for that, um, you can't move on to geometry if you don't have the material for algebra. So you have to have an understanding before you can move on. And, um, I, in, in ways that is a luxury, uh, when we're talking numbers. That doesn't look great. You know, we're talking freshman failure rate. We're talking failure rates for every class. Those are the, those are the numbers that people see and say, oh, wait a second. But if you look at the big picture, you say, you know what? We want them to somewhere along this line, catch it and, and gain some traction so that they can, they can be prepared.
I've got like, a few comments to make. Um, you know, looking from last year's school improvement plan to this year. Um, you know, you, like you mentioned, we did see some, like it is seventy percent, six or seven percent increase in ELA proficiency. So we're going in the right direction. Um, but math is not. Um, and my question, and this will probably be a question for every building, is I understand that, that kids are going to take these tests with a grain of salt. I would do the same thing. Um, so I think it's important that maybe we as a district come up with a different measuring tool. That, that can be presented to the board on an annual basis, maybe prior, you know, maybe sometime in June, July. That, that would give us better metrics. I, I have a hard time believing that fifteen percent of our seniors this year are proficient in math. I, I really have a hard time believing that because if that's the case, then they are not ready. So maybe there's, there's got to be a separate metric that we can do as far as when it, when we look at these different pathways, I know you got to take algebra one or two to get to geometry and then you go to, is it three and four? Is that right?
Trig, pre-trig.
Yeah, pre-calculus. But not everybody's going to go to pre-calculus, right?
Correct.
So I guess the only, uh, I'm trying to come up with a way that these numbers are going to make sense.
So we actually, as one of the activities in there, uh, you know, we narrowed the list down to Alex and maps. That's a request from our math department. They also would like to find other assessment opportunities and other assessment tools, um, that might give them an indication on where the kids actually stand. Uh, and that's something that we'll, we'll put some building money into to, uh, to gather some more data around.
I think another tool that has been used as a metrics before is if you have, and this is just hypothetical, but if you have a class of two hundred, how many take, are taking a fourth year of math when only three years of math are required? Right? So what of the two hundred seniors, how many are taking a fourth year of math by choice? Right? So that's a metric. So are we making, are we sending, sending the message that a fourth year of math is important? Now the fourth year of math might be a CTE math because somebody might not be taking calculus. It might be a college and high school math. It might be many different things. But a fourth year of math is a really strong metrics about how much math is being taught. And how many students, because it's elective, right? How many are choosing to take the fourth year of math? That's a really good metric. How many students are passing with As and Bs versus your ratio of Ds? Now, so, uh, that's another metrics that can be, metric that can be used. Students who receive a D do what they need to do to get the credit to be able to earn the diploma, right? Are they really proficient in math versus the students that receiving the A and B? What is the ratio of A and B students to the ratio of D students? That's another metric that can be used to see about where, take the old bell curve depending on your age, right? And how, where are they falling inside that bell curve? Not that we use bell curve for everything. But what is the percentage of the A and B versus the percentage of the D? And that, you can use that as a metric as well.
I think it's important that we do something like that, you know, just for perception. It's something that, you know, that we can boast on as a district. If, you know, if those numbers look.
Yeah, if you, you could say thirty-seven percent of our seniors choose to take a fourth year of math.
You know, some, something that gives us something.
I, I think that, you know, it's about multiple data points really, um, because if that can go the other way as well. I, having been in a former district that, that did something similar to this, the question then became, well, why are they so successful in here? Why are they, how are they passing all their classes, but yet they tank the test? That's should that, and so it's a matter of, you know, the perception and what we're actually looking at and having multiple data points to support what, what it is that we're trying to say. Um, I, I agree with you. The math department agrees with you. That is a big piece. Uh, another, another thing that might come up and, and we have talked about is, you know, we, I know the middle school went to a different program. That might be something, you know, and trying to, to better align, uh, you know, now that that's coming back around. I don't know how far out math is, but, um, something that we can look at to try and streamline that process, uh, vertically as we try to align. So that might be an advantage as well.
The elementary and the middle school are using the I Ready test too, and it's done three times a year. It's a lot more immediate. SBA is what we would kind of call autopsy. It's already done years over. You don't get the results back years, a lot of times till school's over. So they're, Jody, you'll see some of, Jody, I think brought some of her growth and all the buildings.
And I, as a caveat, that's great. The I Ready is not the test for high school age kids.
Which is, I'm not saying it is, but that is an assessment.
It's, it is, but that's what we're looking, that's the Alex and the maps. We're trying to find data that would be similar to the I Ready that is appropriate for high school age kids.
I know we talked about bringing calculus back, but that's something that still.
It's always been an option. Um, when we have six kids that want to take that class, it's a challenge. It's a challenge to put it on the schedule. Um, when we talk about class sizes and we're packing, you know, we're working on, on master schedule right now to create those opportunities. Um, what we used in the past was fifteen, uh, had to be above fifteen. We're looking at, you know, let's get kids and let's try to, to get more interest and pitch your classes to kids. And, and we have a, a career day coming up that Megan Vanegraff is working on, has been working on. Um, and hopefully some of those professionals that come into our building will really top the math and science classes as well. As, uh, you know, uh, need and, and, you know, generate some desire in the kids to take those upper level math classes as well.
Got to get them in elementary school engaged, right? The academic rigor needs to be raised like from the very beginning, the year of high school and. Ghost, right?
I, I, I can add a little bit to this. Um, someone who's always struggled in math, always, um, I'm not using that piece of the class, seeing the math scores the way that they are, because I can tell you right now, I'm not proficient in math. But my phone is, photo math is, math plays, and these are all things that students use to get by on the, on the, the daily work. And then we just kind of figure it out on the test. And I've told this to a teacher in the past and they agreed with me that the difference on paper of being proficient in math and not being proficient in math is point one percent, that fifty-nine point nine nine to that sixty point zero zero. That's the difference right now between not being proficient and being proficient in math. And it's, 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 it, it's not how it should be. It, being proficient means you should be able to understand it by yourself without any of others. I know there used to be, um, the level one, two, three and four, and four was you could teach it to someone else. I think that you should be able to at least understand it on your own, minimal help, not be at a level.
I don't, and I don't disagree with you. I think there's a number of factors there. Now we're getting into a grading discussion. Uh, that is a very, very big issue and I'm not sure people are ready for that. Um, because we're talking about proficiency scores and, and proficiency weights, um, standards of grading. Um, are we truly ready to say that a proficient student is a B student?
Well, yeah, and I, I, I think part of the problem with that is, is like, we, we want to throw, throw all these kids in a class and they're all, all the same. But I mean, to that point, I mean.
And get to the high school level, it is.
Everybody learns the same.
Uh, you're exactly right.
Math is.
You're exactly right. And, you know, we hear, you're all the time, you know, the time is the variable. Kids learn at different rates. Kids. Is, um, and it's a challenge. Teaching is a challenge. It's an art and, uh, trying to make those connections with kids that, to keep them coming back and fighting through the struggle. Uh, when they don't understand it is, is perhaps the most important thing we do as teachers.
I agree with Shell said, we don't have the academic rigor that starts at the elementary level, but when they get here, if it, if you have that habit, you don't have that steady habit, you're not trying to do it, you're, you're not going to come here and be like, okay, buy me up for all the hardest classes and let's see how it goes.
I do, I do think, and you'll see some of this, uh, as it comes, I, you know, for the first time, we've started some initiatives at a district level. Um, since, first time since I've been here, we have district level initiatives. Um, and everybody's working very hard to try and align vertically so that we are pushing kids in the same direction at every single level, which is up. And, um, and you'll see that from, from my colleagues as they present.
Yeah. I, I, it, it's reflective in the state scores as well. But would you be able to give reason behind why our Caucasian students are testing at twenty-four point seven percent or, um, for English language or, yeah, English language. No, sorry, math. But nine percent or the Hispanics, when that's a two point seven four, the two point seven four times more of our white population is testing higher, yet they make up thirty percent of the student population.
Thought you'd say you weren't good at math.
Yeah. I'm not.
Uh, you'll also see in our plan that one of our, one of our goals, goal six is centered around English learners. Um, I do think that, um, it is, that, that's the gap we're trying to close. That is our largest population. And we are trying to find ways to, to reach those kids and engage. And ways to fix it.
Tell me what a graduation cut score is.
Um.
Like, um, so, yeah, go ahead.
I just put a crack in my mouth. Um, so an S, on the SBA, a three or four is considered, or three is considered. Is considered, or three is considered met standard. Well, about. Six years ago, or so, when the SBA was a graduation requirement, we weren't gonna graduate very many students. So if two twenty-five's the, the score for the level three, it might be. Two twenty, I mean, it's a bigger score than that with this.
Meaning, so.
So it's kind of like a two plus.
You have a standard to graduate, usually that's proficient, we want, your question earlier.
And they're saying.
Efficient students to graduate. Now, what happens when you don't, when none of your schools or relatively few of your schools are proficient? Then they go, oh, here's our cut score, cause we want.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
And, and I want you to know that I was, I was on the, um, SBA committee, and maybe it's nine years ago. And I, I went to the, um. To OSPI and said, I want you to know, it was about March one, and the scores came out. And there were, and I said, on record, on the record, and confined to the news clip, where my voice says. And some senators' kids not gonna graduate because they didn't get a three, and they're gonna lower the score. And it wasn't two and a half weeks later, they came out with the cut score that was lower. And so what, when you continue to drop that down, we had to have better numbers for the state of Washington, and so they changed the number. So, on the record, I'm saying it again.
The district allowed to have a higher standard?
We can have a higher standard, but the data that's reported to OSPI would not be any different. Does that make sense?
But the district could say, our graduation requirement is higher than what's.
Yes.
Think.
It already is.
I think we, I could speak a little to this, you know, it was last year, the year before, we talked about lowering the credits. Um, we neglected to do that because there was a minimum of.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, but we're at like twenty-six.
Six.
Six. Um, you know, and we didn't wanna do that, because that lowers the bar. I think that speaks to a little bit what you're, you're trying to get at, uh, but yeah, we can make our own.
And I think our GPA requirement to play athletics is higher.
Higher, mm-hmm.
It is, we have a higher standard for athletics and activities.
If it becomes something we don't want to be a diploma.
Agree, and I, he would find the same sentiment for every population in this district.
Any other questions for Brian? Brian, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
I, I don't think you have to improve them individually, you can. It's up to you guys, we'll either need one blanket or.
Uh, next up is Michael Denny.
Just for the.
That's what I was gonna say, he didn't. Oh, no, no. We should, we should have hit that as soon as he started, before you guys asked questions, it was well more than three minutes, but. Here's, I think, and, and I've already talked to, um, one board member. The reason why these discussions last hours and hours is because we are passionate about this, and so. And there's so much that goes into it, that this is a sliver. Of our school improvement plan, which is a sliver of the work that we do each year, which is a sliver of the. Decades-long planning and research and work that we put into it, so. It's hard sometimes to encapsulate that in a one pager, but I've done that. And so we'll see how quickly we can go through this. Um, I will say that you guys might have noticed a qualitative and a quantitative difference between. Um. Jody's Heights Elementary and my Housen Middle School. Plans and the other three, and there's a, a slight reason behind that, we, um, have the opportunity to work with, um. Uh, somebody that, um, is an outreach from the Office of School and System Improvement, and so, um. They worked with us a little bit this fall to go through, really refine and to narrow down. What we're looking at and what we're measuring, so you'll notice that Brian had eight or nine goals. We have three, that doesn't mean that we're not measuring and assessing and giving feedback to our system. On nine, ten, fifteen, twenty different things. But for the purpose of the school improvement plan, that as Deanna said, is a Title One requirement that we work with OSSI and OSPI for. Um, we narrowed it down so that it was a more manageable piece. And as the year goes, we have a mid-year check-in, I meet with Deanna, Jody and I meet with Deanna each month. We give feedback on our progress, and then, um, as Brian indicated, as a living document, we update it. So let's say we get through goal one, and we finish that in March. We don't just sit back on our laurels and say, yay, we've made it, we then write another goal, so it's a, it's a constant strive, but if you have. Forty goals, it would be so overwhelming that, um, we would find ourselves in initiative overload, so. That's why we, ours is a little bit different, and this is a new format from what we've used in previous years, um, as it is anyway, so. Um, our goal has, our, our one pager, our sit plan has three main goals. Um, uh, the first one is implementing, um, uh, visible learning practices. Um, and the work that we're doing this year is around teacher clarity. Um, and so with that, the, the measurement of that goal is in reading, and now reading and math would be, and, and. Um, are, as Dana indicated, easy to measure because we use I-ready, that's a fall, winter, and spring benchmark assessment, so we're able to look at. Proficiency, I have the eighth grade math up right here, I can look exactly how many kids are at each level. Um, once we assess in January, I'll be able to give a growth for that, I'll be able to tell student by student, class by class, grade by grade, school by school. Um, the growth in each of those areas, or maybe there isn't growth, so then we're able to better refine and target our, our, um, audience for what interventions and supports they need, so. Um, that is our goal, you can see the, um, it, the next check-in. And it says reading in here, but we'll look at reading and math in the same way, we wanna have, um, seven tenths of a year's growth in a half a year. One year's growth over one year's time means that they've just stayed where they're at, so if you have somebody who's at the eighth grade level. And a seventh grade level, and they tested eighth grade, they've gained a year in a year's time. But we've got so many students that are behind, we can't just sit at one year, we have to have one and a half to two years, um, growth is what we're shooting for, so. You'll see that we broke it down, one, or zero point seven or seven tenths growth in the winter benchmark assessment, and then again, the same seven tenth growth. From January till, um, into May, so that's how we're gonna measure the academic growth in that. Um, as we talked about though, um, we don't just stop at that. We have, each department is meeting, um, at least twice a month to review student data on an ongoing basis through our professional learning communities. Looking at, um, formative assessments, um, summative assessments, and so while we're looking at these. Twice a year, and reporting back on these twice a year, we're meeting twice a month. To look at student growth and, and to work as a, a group of professionals to provide interventions and extensions to our students. Um, a couple of the activities under that, we've already started training on the modules of teacher clarity, um. You'll see Thinking Maps, Maps is activity two, we actually had so much on this year that we weren't able to get, um. Uh, Thinking Maps, the implementation in, in the amount of time that we had, because we had, we'd taken on quite a bit at the beginning of this year, so as, as Brian talked about, this is a multi-year plan. So that'll be looking at opportunities at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four, but more than likely at the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That is a, um, strategy that will support all students, um, even though it talks about the, um, weed of professional development on there. Um, again, the activity three is the benchmarking that we do, we've already got fall done, winter will be, um, a couple of weeks after we get back from break. And then activity four is to work with our, our consultants, um, uh, American Reading Company. Um, ARC is our new reading curriculum that we have, that we've, um, the elementary of, are in their second year, and we're in our first year. Of implementing ARC, and so we are meeting, um, we're meeting this Friday, our teachers will take a half day. Half of them will meet in the morning and receive professional development, the other half will be in the afternoon. Um, we as administrators, um, and again, the elementary have already been doing this, um, do walkthroughs where we pick one area that we're looking for. Uh, we went in today and we're looking for, um, specific things, and we gave feedback to the teachers on that, on their implementation and, and ways to improve. Activities, um, one through four, um, are in place, except for activity two will be probably shelved until next year. Um, goal two, um, regular attendance, Brian's already talked about that, you guys have already talked about that, our goal is ninety percent, um. Uh, this year before COVID, and I hate to even bring the term up, um, but before that break that we had, um, we were in the. And then, um, one of the things, it's Washington School Improvement Framework, that's how the state majors are, um. Our effectiveness, if you will, um, one of the things that they started using, and they used, I wanna say it was the year that we came back partway through the year. Um, they used attendance, and I wanna say we're like in the sixty percent. And so I've looked at the, um, I've looked at our September, October, November. And I, I probably use a little different, I use actual period by period, sometimes when you're in attendance, if you miss one period, it's not considered an absence. So I, I ran them and, and it's by period. Um, in September, we had an attendance rate of ninety-three point four, October, we had a ninety-four point eight. And November was ninety-two point two, now we did have a lot of illnesses, kind of hit us pretty good, took some kids out, it was about five days they were out. So we saw a little bit higher absence rate, but we're in the low nineties, so this will be one of those, we go back to our sit plan and we bump that up. Um, when we look at tardies, that is another one that we wanted to address, um, as part of what our, um. Our activities are, is looking at, um, attendance and tardies, and. Um, we have put, um, some pretty significant majors in this year, and it sounds. Elementary, if you will, and, and I don't even know that all the elementaries do something like this, but the teachers came to us and said, we're having a lot of kids that don't come back from lunch. Um, on time, so our teachers, we worked an extra two minutes before and two minutes after, the teachers walk their kids to recess, they go to recess, they go to lunch. And then they pick them up from lunch and walk them to class. And we have significantly reduced the number of, um, tardies that we have there, the area that we have. Probably about forty percent of our tardies is first period, those are the drop-off, uh, first part of the day, um, the bell rings. We close the gates where they come in through the playground, and everybody starts pulling up to the building, and we have a pretty high first period rate. That is about forty percent, um, the other six periods of the day are about ten percent. So, our, our next phase is we feel like we're kind of getting a handle on some of the, um, rewards and consequences, if you will. Of being tardy throughout the day, the next one is really an outreach, working with our families, um, trying to find, um, ways to. Um, get through those barriers that, um, get students to, to school on time, now I'll, I'll speak about ours. I have a, a son who, if he has an appointment, we try to get it at seven-thirty if we can. So we can get to that, then he's gonna be late in the morning, but he's, we've tried to do that, so we don't miss a, a ten o'clock meeting where he misses multiple periods. So there are times where they're excused tardies, but that's gonna be our big focus, um, is addressing that tardy first thing in the morning. We do have resources in place, we have our counselors, we have, um, my assistant principal and I, and then we have United Way, and we have communities and schools. And United Way and communities and schools work with, um, some of our, um, highest level of, um, attendance needs. But we do, um, uh, tier one, which is school-wide, where we'll walk into a class, and we might say, is everybody here? Yep, was everybody on time? All right, here's a little dummy sucker for every one of you. The crazy stuff they'll do for a four cent sucker is amazing. Sometimes we walk in, and it's like, was everybody here? Nope, we had two kids late this period. All right, guys, we'll catch you the next time, and I don't wanna say it's peer pressure, cause we don't want our kids. You know, really pushing the other kids to, but there is a piece of that, like, man, if I hustled back from, from, you know, whatever it was that I was at. I wouldn't have been tardy, and so, um, it's really putting it in their purview that the kids are kind of taking a, a self-monitoring, um, of their attendance. And then the last one, um, our goal three is implementing professional learning communities, um, to look at student data. And, and really with that, and I've, I've talked about this with some before, is, um. Really having a better understanding, one, of what our students are doing. Um, two, being able to work as a team, um, I think if we were to put any of our teachers in a classroom and shut the door, they could do. A good job, but you put six of them in a room to brainstorm an issue, and they can do amazing stuff, and a lot of times I show up in there. And they tell me what they wanna do, and it's like, here's, here's the resources to do that, and so really, it's a process that we. Had for a while, we stepped away from it a little bit, and we're really putting it back, our goal is, our activity is to have weekly meetings, it's in the, um. It's in the Wednesday calendar to have them twice a month, so, um, we're looking at ways to increase the number of meetings we can have. And then analyzing student data, um, one of the things, um, being under the OSSI umbrella. Um, is we have, um, some funds that are available to us, so Deanna's been working, um, with us to get, um, a thing called homeroom, it's a program. It's a data management tool, so if I wanna look up all the kids that are failing math. Whoop, and it out comes a report, and so it really puts all that information at our hands. Um, so we can really target, um, specific students and, and the work. Some of the work we're doing around teacher clarity, um, and it talks about the teacher clarity playbook in activity one, is to look at the standards. Break those standards down, um, understand what the, what the standard is asking us, um, so we, we look at the nouns and the verbs in there, and. And what is it that we're supposed to, and then we do, um, uh, um, a progression, if you will, like, we want them to be able to do this, but in order to that, they have to do these four things. And so that is, and then we've prioritized those, these are the most important ones, so that work then is guiding our, our discussion around grading. Um, and so the professional learning communities are looking at, um, at a standards level, where are they on meeting standards? And when we look at the overall proficiency, that's an important piece, but I also think we need to take a, a deeper look at what are the standards. Um, and what needs to be addressed, and how do we teach those a little bit better, do we need to go back? Um, I might have a student who has a hundred percent, um, on most of their tests, but there might be a couple of standards that they didn't master, well. Guess what, the next grade level, that now is a priority standard, if they don't understand it, they're gonna really struggle in the next grade level, so looking at our K-12 progressions. And being able to look at how things build on each other, and making sure that the things that are priority for our seventh grade, our sixth grade are addressing those. And our eighth grade or seventh grade, so that we're, we all know what is happening within that progression for our students and experience for our students. So we're putting our time and effort, um, in the areas that need to be addressed. So learning to analyze, um, we talk about the, the four, four questions, um, uh, is it Richard and Rebecca?
Mr. DeFord, is that?
Richard and.
So there's a, a whole system that they have, and they break it down to four questions. What do we want the students to know? So what standards, what skills, what, what knowledge do we want? And so that's the part that we're doing now, um, where we're breaking down the standards and looking at the prioritization of them, and knowing what each of them includes. How are we gonna assess them? That's building our assessment pieces in there, and it's not always the I-ready or the SBA. Those are, maybe it's an exit ticket, maybe it's a cooldown is another term, maybe it's a quick write that they do, maybe it is a quiz, maybe it is a test. Um, so that would tell us whether they learned those skills or not, and then what, the next two questions are, what do we do if they didn't get it? So you're looking at your interventions, and what do you do if they did get it? So the extensions. And, and I'll use an example, like our ELA on the SBA is more than double. The achievement level of our math, so thirty, that's about double, thirty, mid-thirties, um, for, um, ELA. But the growth for ELA was less than it was for math. And so you, you start looking at some of those students that maybe were two or more grade levels ahead, were they there at the end of the year? Or did we not reach every one of our students? So by being able to, um, look at student data and really answer those four questions. It, it brings us to a point where we have a plan for what we do for the student who's already at the tenth grade level as an eighth grader. How do we extend or, um, provide opportunities for them to continue to grow? Um, the way that WSIF, the Washington School Improvement Framework majors it, is how many kids were. Um, proficient, and what was the growth in each of those areas for math and ELA? So it's not just getting kids to be proficient, we would love to have them all proficient, but it's also the kids that are three or more, did they? It's a kid that's one or above, did they grow? So looking at, at all of those pieces are, um, some of the activities that we're looking at for this year, and again. This one pager is a tiny sliver of the work, of the work, of the work, and so, um. I could talk all night about this, but I know that I'm over my three minutes, and so I'll open it up for questions.
So under, uh, section four point two. Uh, so students do not have access to updated and researched base.
That's correct. So, yep, so, um. So we're talking about some of the barriers that we have, um, math, uh, we implemented, um, illustrative math as the new curriculum. Shortly before COVID, and then that first year was the year that we shut down in March, so they got about seventy percent of it. We didn't get all the way through it, the next year, we were online for the, for the first two-thirds of the year, or three-quarters of the year, so we got missed part of that. Now we're getting into, so we've got math, um, we're feeling more comfortable about it, we've included a couple of classes that we haven't had before. Um, kind of finding our, our strength about us there, ELA, um. Previous to this year, you might walk into two different eighth grade classes and see, um, good work, but it was a different experience for our kids. Um, teachers were working their, you know, their, their tails off, um, finding material to support kids. Um, this year, we implemented the American Reading Company, um, ARC curriculum, and so, um, we walked in today and we saw. Um, and they knew we were coming, so, but it's an activity, you can't just make up, we saw experiences that were similar, but they were. Of high rigor, they were. We saw experiences that were similar, but they were of high rigor, they were individualized for the students. Um, but if you were to look at our history, you might see um, a comment about Gary Locke. Um, so the history um, hasn't been, and history doesn't change per se, but from. Mid nineties on, we've had to fill that hole in. And so we have textbooks, and we really don't use textbooks. Um, as much anymore because they are missing twenty, thirty years worth of history. So that's an example of where when we're looking at um, US history. Um, they're finding the materials, the activities, the common, they're building the common assessments um, for that. Science is another one, science. And all of our teachers are amazing, they do do great work, but science hasn't had a curriculum in about as long. And so again, they're spending time outside of the day, teachers pay teachers. Buying a a book and bringing it in to support and supplement the work that they're doing. So as we go down through that, if we were able to have that at the teacher's hands, they're not. Trying to plan and figure out what, where they need to beg, borrow and steal to get that. They're now able to say, alright, who got it, who didn't, what are we gonna do with the ones that didn't, what are we gonna do with the ones that didn't? So that is a barrier for us and and. We're on a cycle and it's, you know, we've talked about it, the strategic planning and at the district level, having that repetitive cycle, so we don't get where we are. Now, so I know that Deanna's working with this, I think science we're looking at, um, starting, she just called me today about starting the um, process of. Exploring science curriculum and then history would be after that, but um, and we've added health, some work in health, we've added arts. Um, uh, Rick is great with supporting, you know, STEM, so really, science and history are are the the two big ones right now. But that has an impact, you talk about the science assessment.
Well, I guess, I guess, what what's the rollout? If if we're twenty or thirty years behind on.
So.
History, then what's the cycle?
About um, probably is before I was in, probably fifteen or twenty years ago, they kinda went, oh, no money for curriculum adoption. We went a really long time without adopting curriculum. Um, since I've been in this role that has gotten restarted, but again, money has seemed to come and go, we have to commit money. To curriculum adoption, so we have a cycle, but it keeps getting pushed back when money isn't allocated for it. Um, we were online to adopt, we were pushing to adopt science, um, and COVID hit. But it really, it was six, twelve science, it wouldn't have mattered cuz there really wasn't many curriculums, if any, out there to consider. So we, I'm actually, it's in my, I I, you'll see the Science Adoption Committee at the end of the month, um, so I won't have to tell that in my. Report, but um, we're gonna start the science adoption and then it will probably take us though a year and a half because. We prob- we will probably do some piloting, um, not just, cuz it's so expensive. It's half a million dollars. So, and it's, it's, uh, it costs us probably close nine hundred thousand dollars to adopt elementary. Close to half a million to it, for, I mean, it's very, very expensive, but it is our responsibility to put quality curriculum in teacher's hands, they're not, they're not. They're not experts on developing curriculum.
And I wanna, I wanna make clear that our history department is not stopping.
No, they're not.
Nineteen ninety-seven where the.
But they have to.
They've been, they've, yeah, they've.
But that is the, that is one of the hopes that they have, a class set of his house Gary Locke is the governor.
Ryan, her name is still in that.
And might, it might, it might even have been before your time, I don't know. Well, histories, uh, history's after science, so history's always been in line before, I mean, science has been in line before history. So we need to commit the money to do science and then um, and then we, history will be next.
I can see it's a tribute to the, the really high quality. History teachers that we do have, so you have.
Oh.
Teachers doing next to history day and their presentations, I think if we didn't have that high level of history teachers.
We have great history teachers. Oh, yeah. And and I know we're joking, but it is our, is our our responsibility as a district, right? To put the best curriculum she can and cans of. And one of the things you've tasked me to do is to write the budget, figure out how we're gonna do that, put the. The prior, the money and the priority in the right places, right? And so that's where, that's where we're heading, um, so. But but at the same time, with that saying, I don't wanna always sound like talking out both sides of my mouth, but we also have to find a way. You you can't just do sixth and seventh grade without doing it all, or it, you, you have to commit for to a sixth, twelfth adoption.
Yeah. Um, I, so I I assume, so you said January is the next go around for I ready testing?
Correct.
And I'm assuming now, like those results will be available to the district.
Yep, yep.
They 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 come in immediate, so once it, the student finishes, they're there, so I can watch them populate as we go, so it's an immediate feedback for us.
How you feeling?
Uh, optimistic, the the issue, and I just wanted to throw that out there, we have implemented ARC this year, our our reading curriculum. There's a lot to that. And and I remember the the stories from the elementary. Talking about, wow, that was kind of a, an interesting rollout, there's so much to it, but they gave us this and they gave us this. And that's where we're at now, one of the, and I didn't put it in here, one of our barriers is um, the length of time that it requires. Doesn't require that it, that it um, that it recommends, is like ninety minutes a day. And so in that time, students would get um, the core instruction, but then they would also get on a, on a basis, maybe it's once a week, maybe it's. Twice a week, maybe it's one, you know, once every uh, um, two weeks, get individualized work. And so what we've had to do is rob Peter to pay Paul, because our class periods are fifty-five minutes long. And we don't have the staffing to be able to run blocks, we're working on that for for next year. Um, but that's a whole nother barrier, it's not only are we implementing it. But what should be four core lessons a week, we're doing two lessons a week, cuz it takes that amount of time. Instead of meeting for um, um, our level red students. Um, you know, meeting a couple of times a week, we're meeting maybe once a week, so. There are some systematic things that that we're working on as a building to provide everything that it needs to fit nicely in our school. And so when we talk about ELA, I I'm not sure that we would see. The growth that we've set for our goal, just because of that factor, and we didn't recognize that, or I mean, we recognized it, but we didn't realize. How difficult it was gonna be until the year started, and so we kept the sole goal the same, that's still our goal and we'll have kids that will meet that goal. Um, but I think there's, it just needs to be said that those are some factors that we're um, looking at as we go. And and kids will exceed those and will will celebrate those, so.
Um, I have a question about. Have you seen an actual difference?
Yeah, one of the things that we we did is we we, we look back at like discipline rates and and that kinda stuff and we saw, oh, yeah.
You should, can you repeat your question? I didn't hear it.
Oh, okay, um, character strong, I had, um, I was asking if they've seen like an actual difference being made with that, like curriculum and whatever it is.
Okay, thank you.
Back onto that, but I underline this as a term, I don't, I don't know what it is.
Character strong?
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we look at social emotional learning, um, cell is what you'll see, um, you know, abbreviated down to. We were tasked with, you know, and when I went to school, it was like be good or you get the paddle or or whatever. What we found though is over time, that wasn't effective. And I hope that I'm a product of the effectiveness of what we did when when we were in school, but. It comes down to, there's so many social and emotional needs that we um, across the district have have implemented. Um, a curriculum to address that. So ours happens to be called Character Strong. Um, and so with Character Strong, there's, there's two components that we implement at the middle school. Um, last year, we, for the first time, we implemented um, leadership classes and this year is our second year in that. And then we have an advisory, so in our schedule, we have a schoolwide AVID. Um, period that's fifteen minutes and within that, we teach lessons and we go through character dares and we have them. Learn about um, all those pieces. We weren't seeing the effectiveness that we wanted to. And so one of our teachers, this summer and continued on through this year, has um, modified it. So let, an example with the character strong curriculum, they say to follow it with fidelity and well, well, conflict resolution. Might be in May, well, we need that September first. And so um, Mister Applegate has gone through and not only taken the the character strong curriculum. But he's added to it, so um, there's a writing component now every week and we know that if kids write. Um, and we're working to expand that to all the content areas, but if they write, so every week they're given a prompt and reflect on that and write on that. So we're increasing our our writing proficiency. Um, every week, there's um, a quote that they have to reflect on. There is a video that we have them watch, then they set goals of how they can implement those those pieces. And then um, we have them actually go through and and do some of, some of the tasks and and things that they've talked about. Um, at the same time, we use it to measure students, so we talk about cell um, screening. And so we would do a social emotional screening early in the year and then in the mid-year, kinda like what we do with the I ready. With this, we have the kids rate themselves one through five and Y every Monday. And so the kids come into class, give themselves a rating one through five and Y, it's confidential, goes to the teacher. There's maybe twenty kids in a class and then that teacher goes through them and, and little Michael might always be a two, school sucks. Lunches are horrible, I don't like getting up. But that's not, and those are things like, okay, we can address that. What we're looking for are the the um, little Owens that were fours that become a one. And so we're doing better at that, we're seeing a better reaction to students. When we get that feedback from our cell screener um, weekly, we're seeing um, lower levels of of. Discipline in the areas that we wanted to see lower, um, but we're still seeing, you know, it's middle school, we have some some discipline that we. Address on it on a daily basis with students, but it's a smaller number than what it was before and so. It's hard to major because kids, kid to kid throughout the year, there's changes in their um, hormones, their growth, all that. But we are seeing um, a a a difference. Um, and I just don't happen to have all the numbers to say, oh, it's a twenty-seven percent reduction in that, but we are and and part of that is, it's a great program, but it's. People like Mister Applegate and Mrs. Huntington and uh, Mrs. Esri that run our leadership and and really put the time in to. To mold that into something that really fits for Housen Middle School and so um. Yeah, we're seeing success because of, because of our staff.
I have a couple of questions, um. And then maybe this, and this will take out question for the remaining uh, principals, but. I ready goes K through eight, right?
So we also give it for if there's lap students at the high school because we're, we have some required lap reporting, but that's like a small number, but yes. K eight, kindergartners don't take it in the fall, but they take it the other two times.
What I, what I would like to see personally is that we get um, maybe an update.
We can do a lap growth report for you.
And in the spring.
It'd probably be February, we would do a February and a, like a, like a June.
Yeah, but at least we could see, you know, some progression.
Well, I think we could also take a look at lap over, or I ready over time. So we could look at the second grade. And then what they look like in third grade and then what they look like in fourth grade, right? Um, because that's that progression that we're talking about. And some of the work that you'll see, be working with me and helping me grow and us grow as a, as a team is, how do we look at that longitudinal data? Um, to see if we're really seeing a change. Um, and as Noah brought up, are we seeing a decrease in the gap of that particular student that? You know, we had seventeen struggling and now we have fifteen and we had, you know, and and is that gap actually reducing? Cuz it's good to compare second grade to second grade. Because we're seeing if we're getting better at what we're doing in second grade. But really, we're, if we're really caring about each and every single student, we're looking at this second grade and them at this third graders and then them as fourth grade.
Um, another comment I'd like, so looking at last year's numbers and then again this year. Um, like we were just saying, your sixth graders are performing better than they did in twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, but also notice that they increased. The sixth graders in twenty-one, twenty-two actually did better as seventh graders last year. Um, so I think, so I think that's good, I think we're going in the right direction. One of the things that I did notice is that the fifth graders from twenty-one, twenty-two going into sixth grade. Have dropped slightly.
In math.
Uh, math and. At least based on the numbers, right?
Yep.
But also, um. From seventh, the seventh graders to eighth grade.
Hmm.
Um, can you elaborate why that might be?
So in the ELA, like I said, it might be um, teacher to teacher at the time, different experiences for kids. Math, um, they should have received a a relatively similar. One of the things that I think is. Is unsaid maybe, is the amount of students that, and I, and they're not. Migrant in the sense that they move away and come back, but the amount of migrants, migrant movement within the, in the valley. Um, we've got four um. Um, choice transfer requests from a neighboring district in the last week. Um, those are students that wanna come to our building, so when I look at the kids from last year. And I take those SBA scores and I roll them over to this year, the number of kids that I green highlight out or blue or whatever color I've used for no longer in the district is. Is pretty significant and and enough that it kept, could make a difference. The other part is. We go back and start looking at what is the difference, and so the five to six is a huge one. Um, Superintendent Casey, you know, we've already been talking about the fact that um, the the transition from fifth to six is a huge one. You've got one teacher, maybe two, if you've, if you've got, you know, go for reading in a, in a different area than in math and one, um. But when you move to to six periods a day, um, a lot of, so we're talking about how do we, how do we bridge that gap? Um, how do we make that transition and and we've, we've been mulling around ideas already about um, starting early, all that transition. So the transition piece is is one of them. Um, looking student to student is a, is another one. Um, and I'd have to go back, we weren't as clear on our data with um, the PLCs and looking at it. The um, assessments that we use, formative assessments, but we'd have to almost go back to a student by student to look at that. Um, cuz like I said, you look at it last year, maybe that group dropped, but the year before, we had a twelve point gain in the same, so. Um.
Like a quick, just a quick introduction here, so we used to have, so, you know, we have a migrant population, but. Really, we are, it, we are, that we're having a much more mobile student population than I've ever seen. And this, and I know that we've had more of it, but I was kind of taken aback about. A month ago, I got a list of the, Sean sent me a list of the kids who didn't have their Wa- Washington State History requirement met.
Oh, yeah, this is.
And I, and was like, oh my god, how do we have seventy-two kids that did not meet their Washington State History requirement? Never seen anything like it, and I know at the middle school, we're talking about Dean Smith and Jeff Applegate, very few kids don't pass, they take it in seventh grade, so. Very few kids, but so now they're ninth grader, so it's two years later, so there was COVID. And there was the coming back for that, but I went, I'm like, okay, what is going on here? And I was so taken aback by it that I spent two hours looking at every single kid. Going, how do we have this many kids that didn't pass Washington State History? We didn't, we had seven.
We had seven.
There were sixty-five kids that had come and gone out of the district on that list in two years, and I was like, oh my god. That is, we've never, I've never seen anything like that, like we might have in a school year ten years ago. Ten kids go, maybe ten kids come, we're talking that seventy-two kids in two years switch in and out of the ninth grade class. Is crazy, and that's not even accounting for the kids that left and weren't on the list anymore, so there's more.
Yeah, so this is students that have left, gone and come back.
Or went from another district, or came from homeschool, or were online, or were in another state or what, and some of them may. Because they were in a s- a school in this state, have the requirement, someone's gotta go into a file, look at the paperwork, find that they took. Took that requirement, I was. I was, I, cuz I was so shocked, it made, I was like, what the heck is going on here? And it, it was mobility, sixty-five kids.
And along with that, we, so we have students in, and their primary language is Spanish. And we have multiple students, many students that have primary languages, Spanish, but in this group. You know, refer to them as newcomers, newcomers to the country, newcomers to the area, where. I think we have three to four students, at least in each grade level, that we didn't have last year. That we just had one um, two days ago, moved from Mexico. Has zero, and so when we do the state assessment and and not so much on the, on the already, but the state assessment, if they're here within their first. Their first year, we we don't have to assess them on that, but if they're here more than a year, we are assessing them. And so let's say they moved to Grandview, we get a, you know, that Benton City, Grandview, Mapton, there's a lot of flow and influx. Um, let's say they were at, you know, Grandview for a year, they come over and join us, they're taking that test and there's certain accommodations we can. Give for that, but they know that's a, that's a factor, that's a um, you know, a barrier that we're pushing over, hmm. So. Could we say all of that is a reason why you're seeing a, a ten point, eight point, twelve point drop? No, but those are some of the factors that that do measure into that, that that don't show up in the, in the little one line that we give you.
Thank you. Any other question? Thanks, Mike.
Now, I'm gonna say this. Now, I'm gonna say this. I used to do this before COVID, then COVID hit, we stopped it. Anybody is welcome anytime, and we've said that before. Somebody took me up on that the other day and was in my office for three hours. That was a scratch of what we need to talk about because they're. Knowing just that, just knowing what How's all is about or any of these schools is one thing. Knowing about the kids is the next thing. Knowing about the programs that we have is something else. Knowing our goals, the research, like that is a multi-year conversation. And I'm happy to have that at any point. So whether it's email, text, stop by the office. Um next time I'll put some coffee on if somebody stays for three hours, but. But thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Michael. All right, next up, Witstran. Mr. Gilmer.
He's leaving. He's out. Dual factor authentication.
Extra security. All right, I have to clarify one thing to Director Wyman. What I was saying about the history books is not that your name was in the history book itself that you, but you you put your name at the beginning when they handed the books out. Everybody, when they issued the book at the end of the year, you would, you would write your name at the beginning and I'm saying that that's why your name was still in there because of the same book.
I I thought that's what you meant.
I just had to explain that. I. So I wanted to clarify that, just. Um so you guys have had, you have all the information, the the school improvement plan, uh the goals. I'm not gonna really go into each goal, but uh the activities here that we have going on uh with our PLCs, we're really. Uh thank you again for adopting the reading curriculum. Um we are seeing an impact. You might not be seeing the results of that right away because. It is uh building knowledge, building strategies over time. As these kids learn, that's why, like Michael said, it, you know, our buildings are open. You're welcome to come in. I mean, some, there's some very exciting things that are happening. Teachers are excited about it. Um students are excited about it uh to come in and and see some of the strategies that we're we're implementing and actually see it in person. Um so a a little bit about the PLC and I'm gonna. What we're to the point right now, we've done visible learning. I think if you remember back uh three years ago, I started talking about visible learning. The effect sizes of things. You had asked me a question, coming out of the pandemic, how do we turn this around? The only thing I really know at this point is using the research and those effective practices. And uh so as a district, we're going forward um. With teacher clarity, which has a seventy five hundredths effect size when it's done correctly. Um and that's the point of doing these progressions so that our teachers have a better understanding of the standards. Therefore, they're able to communicate that to the students better. And the students are also understanding um the expectation at at. The end. So what is the product at the end? What is the end goal of this standard? Um and our teachers having a deeper knowledge really of that. But visible learning in itself, which is rubrics, examples, um to the targets, the success criteria. Examples and non-examples, all of those things go into visible learning, which ends up having a one and thirty three hundredths effect size. At this point, I'm sinking all my eggs into this basket. Our our staff did research on visible learning and literacy. Two years ago, last year we did uh visible learning and mathematics. Um based on those two things and going through that as a book study. We have narrowed down what we are doing. Um in math, we're narrowing down because the 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 research actually called out some of these strategies. So number talks, which is building the fluency and flexibility. I love you guys to come in and see a number talk. It's, it is, is pretty cool. Um rich tasks, you're at, you're talking about rigor. Well, in these books, they talk about surface level deeper and then transfer. Eighty percent of the time, research says teachers stay at the surface level. We're trying to break that mold. Um but that's also breaking habits and routines and learning something new. And how do you break that is is rich task discourse, math menus, manipulatives are called out. To build that concrete foundation so that when they do go on to Michael, because I I'll tell you, I feel horrible. I mean, all of us do and eventually going to the high school. This is, this is, so this is the area that we're focusing on, at least for mathematics. ELA, we have the, with the the new curriculum, there are some very neat pieces in that accountable talk. If you look through my document, there's an area where we identify, I think it's on page five, and it it's continued. It just continues. It's a, it's a cycle. Um I identifying our EL students. Noah had that question earlier. And i- if you wanted to really look at the demographics, I mean, we could. I don't have the time to really pull that up, but there is a huge discrepancy between our demographic populations. Um and and the conversation should be switching to how we're going to specifically address that area. And one of them is thinking maps. Thinking maps is also um a strategy that addresses. Uh as a bilingual um. How should I say that? Beyond a strategy, a support for all EL students, but I'm gonna, I'll be honest with you, the thinking maps is a support for all students, not just EL students. We would have, if, when you first look at thinking maps, you would, you would identify them as graphic organizers. It goes beyond that. Um what we are starting in kindergarten and going through all through fifth grade, Michael's talked a little bit about extending it to the middle school. Is there selecting these graphic organizers based on the thinking that they're required to do when they're reading? Are they care comparing and contrasting? Are the, are the, is there cause and effect? So they're having to identify the structure in the text. That's how we're trying to increase rigor, but also supply the sup- uh supply the scaffolds. For those kids to have access to utilize that. The big piece right now that we're working on, last year we implemented it, the the thinking maps, uh K, K five. This year, we're working on the writing component of that. And the big piece that we forget about a lot of times, especially with our EL students, is the oracy piece. Talking about it before you're actually writing, um which helps all students. Um Christine Mead came to me the other day and. Uh it was a compliment that she was giving because even our, she's our new open door teacher. Even our open door kids are using these thinking maps and applying them to the thinking that they're using. So it's, it's, to me, it's, it's very exciting. It's, it's hard work. Like I said, there's been a lot of change going on. Um but the thinking map, right now, we're into that stage, if you look at the. Um the activity number two is building a capacity with our staff. So that when they're implementing this, they're, they're pulling out the writing strategies and also speaking off the map. So the students would fill this out. Uh the the graphic organizer or the thinking that's going on, if they're comparing, contrasting, they're using the double bubble. Then they're partnering with a group or they're partnering with another individual and they're talking about. The differences and similarities of two, well, I'll just give an example of two literary texts. And then eventually going to write. And the writing piece is the transfer. So we're going from surface, the speaking of it, talking about it goes into the deeper part of it, and then there's the transfer, which has to be in writing. That's the true knowledge piece is the transfer. And so we're trying to address the writing, the speaking um to go even deeper. Math will also be continuing the the learning progressions, but at the rate that we're going now. Math might end up getting pushed until next year for the learning progressions, just because our our staff are really digging into the ELA progressions right now as a whole district. Brian had talked about this is the first time it's been a whole initiative. Number talks, uh and then you're gonna see math workshop. That's gonna be our book study this year. One thing that we identified. Through through that visible learning, that research through visible learning and mathematics is uh. It is really the rich tasks and the discourse. And then when does the differentiation come? Um and and we've done a a better job at with reading, providing that differentiation support with Erla and the Anil. And addressing specific targeted skills. How are we going to do that in math and still be able to move on? I'm going to give a a a quick example. So many times, I'm gonna give a quick example. I was in appeal. I'm already over?
You're under Michael's time.
Well, that's kind of easy to do. I was in appeal see with another grade level and the the class next door to that room was cheering. Like I need to go find out why they're cheering and why they're celebrating. The teachers during their, this was a fourth grade, the fourth grade teachers during their PLC. We're starting to use assessments, the better we understand the standards. And the better understanding we have of assessments, how to assess students. They had given an assessment during their math unit. And we're using standards mastery in math, so you're asking about rigor. Um standards mastery in math are SBA style questions. That we can get immediate results back after we give them to the kids. We analyze those results. Those teachers analyzed, they're like, oh, wow, there's a big hole here. Act uh vocabulary was a hole. Um and then there were some skills based areas that were were holes. They decided as a group to bring their two classes together. Um had the threes and fours go work on a rich task that they were working on together. They pulled the ones and twos. Uh one teacher had the twos, the other ones had the ones. And that there was a shift. In learning overall at the end of that unit. And I wasn't, I should have brought the data just to show that to you because I didn't, but I wasn't planning on talking about that. I just wanted to give this example. That's what the kids were celebrating. So you can't tell me that kids do not want to know the expectation in class and be part of that conversation. Because the teacher had a graph of the before and the after, and the number of ones that it had gone up to threes. Was drastic. By the way, I went in there and said, this is fantastic work. You guys, you guys worked hard. And you you hit this, I gave him pizza party. So they cheered again, but. That's the mindset that we have to shift to. Our teachers have to shift to. Being intentional with assessments to pull out what is the need of the students and addressing those needs in real time. Not waiting for an I ready test, not waiting for the SBA, not even waiting for the unit. In a unit test, it's too late. It has to be in real time. The instruction has to be modified to address those needs. So that we're moving kids incrementally throughout the year. I don't even know where it's going at that point. So really what we're trying to do is get insis- consistent instructional strategies in ELA and math. So we don't have pockets of excellence. So that across K five, what I'm doing in number talks, the strategies that I'm using in number talks. Build on the next grade level, build on the next grade level, build on the next grade level. So that when these kids go through, they have tools in their tool belt to use and are able to articulate it. Identify it and use it. Because if it doesn't transfer to the students, we're wasting our time. So that's really what we're doing is we're focusing on visible learning and and the effect sizes in those strategies that have high effect sizes. And if you want me to do something else, please tell me. Um you're gonna see some, some dips, well, you probably did see some dips in our SBA scores. I'm not using this as an excuse, but it did have an impact. Our third graders that are coming in didn't have a kindergarten year. Our fourth graders didn't have a first grade year. But they also are the ones that are showing the the most growth. Last year in I ready, if you look at the I ready scores, we had the highest growth in I ready than we have since we started it. So they're growing. Is it translating to the SBA? Not yet. Um another thing, the state used, you asked for a different measure that we could start looking at. The state used to give us a measure. It was a great measure. Because it would take an individual student where they were the year before and then how they scored the next year, and they would show a growth. They stopped that in two thousand eighteen nineteen. They just started again this year. So hopefully then we can start seeing, yeah, they didn't meet it, but we're, we're growing. These kids went, you know, sixty percent of our kids grew. Moving levels. And I think if that, if they continue with that that metrics. Um it it will be helped because I know it was helpful to me. Michael actually showed me about it. Usually, Mrs. Riley always asks us every year what we would like to do. You started with the high school, if we had all the money in the world. Well, no, but it helps me. It helps me, it helps me prepare because the, it is a very good question. Caught me off, caught me off guard the first time, which. Um which is good, it was a good question. I've mentioned this to you. Uh National Center for Urban School Transformation. There are some schools in the United States that are distinguished. And I'm not talking about Mercer Island or Richland or Muckatillo. I'm talking about schools that have similar demographics to what we have here. What are they doing? I want to see it. Because I feel like we have the pieces in place that we could do it, but I want to see it. I want to talk to them. I mean, we're here, we talk to each other. And we're trying to solve problems and issues, but if somebody else has already done it. I want to go talk to them and and have a conversation. I want to see their students work. I want to see what their teachers, how they're addressing some of these things. And if I had all the money. There is a lady I would bring here, and her name is Olivia Amador Valerio. She's my friend. I think, well, I'm her friend. I don't know if her friend's back. I met her at the visible learning training last year. And what about her? In one year, she had similar demographics that I have in my building, but a bigger school. In one year, she turned that school from a failing school to a successful school and won earned distinguished awards. Her school. Is only a few miles away from the border of California. I want to know what she's thinking. I don't want to know what she did. I want to know how the district supported it. So if I had all the money in the world, I'd bring her here. I'd go there, we would go there and try to find some outside of what the book studies that we're doing to find. Uh answers through research, actually having conversations with somebody that's done it.
That's a great idea.
I love that. Does she do?
I I, well. Just depends on.
It's not gonna cost money, right?
I'm assuming. She she does email when I ask her questions about PowerPoints and things like that. She's, she has responded. But the difference between, but the difference between keynote speakers, you have some professors. And they do in the research. But she did it. And I respect that. So. Uh not only that, but there, like I said, there are other schools that I've talked to Jason about, National Center for Urban School Transformation. That you have these inner city schools that are, I know we're not inner city, but our demographics are going to be similar. And if they're able to 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 do that in the inner city, we should be able to do that.
I do want to know why everyone laughed when she said she was your friend.
I can tell you quickly. It's just a little.
I could, I could tell that story. Okay, this is gonna be really quick. I don't know if Laurel. I know I'm overtime, but um. John, uh Fisher, Doug Fisher, which is part of the visible learning in Corwin, and he does, he's out of the, you know, um. San Diego State University, came to the Tri-Cities. We sent the coaches. And Laurel met him down there and he signed her book. So she started calling Doug Fisher her friend because I'm gonna be honest, Doug Fisher has helped us along with these book studies. He gives us. He responds. Now we found out it's actually his secretary that responds, but does, and it's immediate, like. We, our, our questions that they do in professional development, they shared that with us when we were doing our book studies. And so Laurel would go around, I have a friend, it's Doug Fisher. Now, it kind of was rubbing it in because she got to go to it and I didn't. A still sore subject. But then, uh, so now I have my own friend that's, sends me emails and responds to me. Um, when I ask, so that's why, that's the inside joke, sorry.
If you have a couple, um, questions, I will. Just saying over and over again, science, what are you doing about science? And I hope that when we adopt a new science curriculum, it will be a K twelve, not a six, twelve science curriculum.
Couple of things. So we had new fifth grade teachers, well, they've been here now for a while, so we, there was a switch to NGSS. Our science scores did increase last year from the previous years. They're being more intentional on what they're doing with the students because there's new requirements. Um, with that outside of just kits. I taught science, Jesse taught science. Just doing the kits is not enough. It's not enough, it's not intentional enough. So that's, that's one area. Our new reading curriculum also has science in it. And builds content knowledge from kindergarten all the way through, and actually in kindergarten, all the units are science. So.
Yeah, it would, it would be great to do that, I mean, we have, we have these things broken up just because of cost. It's so expensive. And we did review science for elementary, probably. It's been less than twenty or twenty-five years it's been for the high, for secondary science. But it's, it's much more recent, but it does, the requirement now from the state is science every day, there's some other. Changes that have happened, so it does need to be reviewed too, but secondary history and, and, um, science really needs. The attention first, if we have to choose a place to put our money.
I have no evidence to support this anecdotal completely, but every. Elementary school child I've ever talked to is way more excited about doing science in school. Than language arts and math. And science can teach language arts and math both through science curriculum and get kids excited about learning, so.
And that was one of our non-negotiables is that science was integrated into the ELA.
My other question was. What happened between spring of twenty twenty-three and fall of twenty twenty-three, is that just summer slide or, I mean, all of this?
Um, so I've been asked that before. And actually Jesse just whispered that back to me earlier. The, the spring test is the test, uh, diagnostic test that measures that grade levels. Standards at the end. In the fall, we switched to new standards. And the test is measuring the end of the standard.
So really at the beginning of the year, they shouldn't be high, they need to be high by then.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was talking about following the trend, we want to compare the. Spring score of third grade to the spring score of fourth grade. And so if you think about standards based testing, if we take a test on day one of whatever grade or whatever standard, you really should get. In a weird, strange way, a zero or a one. Then we work on it and we gain the knowledge and at the end of that standard, we should be getting a three or a four.
Um, and I have asked I ready to do, uh, longevity data, they currently do not have that where. Now, our ERLA and Anil data is longevity, that will follow that student as they go through. So you can see all of the, uh, intervention kits that they've been in. Assessments and it, it just follows them, it's great, I ready does not have that yet. Which, if we found an assessment tool that was able to do that, that would be very beneficial.
Chart or a data point that you can look at that shows beginning of the year. A beginning of the year view. Um, and when you look at it, it looks better. But I don't know what that beginning of the year view is, like, what does it mean beginning of the year, what does I ready think that is, you know? Because they've tested them on that next history level standards. What their expectation was of it. So while the graph looks better, I don't think it really gives us the. The data that we need, but you, you see that the spring scores. Into align more to that beginning of the year view because it's not measuring the end of the year standard.
On your goal number two, it says. Typical growth in fifty percent of their stretch goal by spring of twenty twenty-three. Is that? I figured as much, but I wanted to ask.
It should already be done.
That's what, that's kind of. Any other questions for Ken?
Having K two five in one building.
Yes.
The reality is the less transitions kids have, the better they grow. And having them in that for those six years in one place allows a building to know more about them. The less transitions you have, that's why you see a big drop in sixth grade because they leave fifth grade and they go to sixth grade and it's kind of a. Big thing and same thing happens in ninth grade and so.
We can stop that second, third grade. And just think about your, um, I'm going to use myself as an example as, as a single parent. The transition that my children had to go through, transitioning from. A two-parent household to a one-parent household, and those are people that love them with all of their heart, right, and I have two children, right? Think about that child who knew where to go and stand in line for the lunch line, knew the lunch line lady's name, knew where their bus was, do whatever, and. And now they go to third grade and they have to learn all of those routines and those people and those faces and like, who's their, who's their one trusted adult, who's their peo-? Who's their people at night? That's it, you're asking a lot.
Well, and they know them.
Yeah. So. They don't have, the teachers aren't learning the behaviors and stuff.
And I think especially for special, for kids that are, that have special needs, I think kid, I, I would use an example. Of my daughter who has autism, if she had to go learn a new routine as a third grader. Any progress that we have worked so hard for, I think would have just been blown up, you know, start from zero, so I think eliminating. Those transitions whenever possible just helps kids so much.
Not only that, it's, it's structural alignment, I. My, I mean, it stretched me because I came from a three-five background and then figuring K two out is. Well, first and second, and then Kinder is kind of by themselves because it's a whole different world in Kinder. But, but now, like I said, the, we have the research, we know kind of the direction that we need to go. And getting those instructional strategies consistent in a progression from K to five. I, I think it's going to benefit. And. Like I said, I'm putting all my X in this basket, so if you want me to go in a different direction, that would be great, let me know. If it fails, I'm calling John Hattie.
And Olivia.
Oh, he's my friend, I have his book.
Okay, so I missed the memo. Today, my daughter had a doctor's appointment, and we weren't supposed to agree anything, and because I get very nervous. And so my secretaries know that and I have great people at my school, so they made a. So I'm just kind of.
Which is also getting Jody.
I'm kind of brat and it's, it is, I'm just am, so. It's just what it is. But. As Michael said, we have very, very similar goals, so I won't go through that, but. I do think it's important when you make a goal, you have these activities to achieve these goals of recognizing where you're at. So that is the big thing is in the blue. I've put down where we're at. In these goals as we're continuing to work, so. Our goal one is really, um, all about visible learning, so you'll see the different activities, those are the training days. And then activity two, there's a whole bunch of I ready stuff, so if you go under goal one. At a different time, you'll see all sorts of that, um, I readies. I ready from last year comparing. Fall to spring, you'll see this year's diagnostic, diagnostic for math and reading. They're all together, okay? Um, using an OG consultant as Orton Gillingham, we, um, as Michael said, we have a. I want to say consultant, but a helper. Chris Clem is our coach, right? Okay, it's like now I'm losing, um, and so she actually helped me with this and they have Chris. Um, Clem and this, um, lady named Sam who's no longer, not no longer with us as she passed away, but she's no longer with us. No longer our coach, anyways, they, um. We use Orton Gillingham in our interventions, and so she, uh, knows some people, but we have not set up a time to go do that and work with that person. Um, Kevin's really talked about thinking maps. And so thirteen teachers, um, were trained by Kendra Wood, she's our instructional coach. And I did have one of my, um, dual language teachers, she said this was the best training that she's ever been to. And they immediately put it in, so there's some, um, pictures of examples of, um. Thinking maps also, and then we have a one hour follow-up in January and then again in March. Um, our activity two is really about attendance and improving that culture and climate of wanting, having the kids be here. So we do have a PBIS team, we have two parents on that team and, um. Teachers or staff that is represented from all grade levels and departments along with, um. Classified. And then you'll see, we have our tier one, um, strategies, tier one should be eighty percent, kind of hitting eighty percent. And that is kind of what we're doing right now, we have some extra recess, we have some bracelets, they're acknowledged at our student of the month assemblies. Um, those that had their, um, pizza coupon for the perfect attendance for the trimesters, starting in January, we're going to do grade level competitions. Terry Beal is one of the teachers, Terry Beal and Julia Johnson are two teachers on the PBIS team. They're looking for a horse that they can. Yes, as the tro- no, but a horse, like a stuffed animal that we could use as a trophy for. Because we are very competitive at Heights Elementary School. And so that is something, um, we are trying to do a survey, we have examples, we have not sent that out, we've, um, kind of lagged on that. For our students' kind of, um. Sense of belonging, these are, our goal is ninety percent, these are our, our, um, totals. You can see that October is really the closest that we got to ninety percent. Um, November and December are always low months, um, vacations. Our activity, our goal for goal three is our PLC meetings and these are when we meet. I'm super excited about this, I think that this has been the biggest impact that we've had, or the biggest, um, not impact, but the biggest. I can't think of more, but we're very excited about it. And, um, this is when they meet and there's an example of our PLC notes that actually just happened today for third grade. And then you'll see our ARC data, it's, it's difficult to see, but every month they, you can see, um. They're in levels, student levels. Of where they are, and then after each time period, they all move, so if they're in the green, if like, we'll use white, okay? It eventually whites, I don't even know how to explain it. Like, the proficiency level will adjust as the year progresses. So there's an example on that, and then we're doing a book study and we're not, what we've done is because we have PLC during their plan time, I give PLC because. The district for their Wednesday time, we have PLC slash teacher time, and so I give part of that PLC time on Wednesdays back to them. So really we only have about twenty minutes. And so we've been very, um. Intentional about what we use those twenty minutes for as all staff. So we have, um, implemented PLC leaders this year, and those are the teachers that we have taken to our conference in Minneapolis. And then we added a couple because as, um, Kevin said, Christine Means was our fourth grade teacher, she's now the open door teacher. So we invited a fourth grade teacher, um, Rachel Bossett in. And then we added a fifth grade because Jen Hartsfield is dual language fifth grade, but we wanted. So yes, we added a couple more in and we have been meeting every Monday for about a half hour, forty-five minutes. And we really have been going through the book and then we teach the book to, or teach the highlights of the book to our, um, staff. In fact, I'm part of the book, chapter two is all about mission vision, um, goals. And something else. I've just lost it, but we just create, created a mission statement because nobody. Knew the mission statement at Heights, including myself, we had it up on the board and then we moved. And does anyone know it? And no one knew it, so it's like, you know what, if no one knows it, then let's, we've had enough turnover, let's create one, so we did. And so you can see some pictures on that. Why are we in school improvement, we are in school improvement, it's not something, um. We're not proud of it by any means, um, but these are our scores, but if you look down where it says Washington State Improvement Framework. Um, you can see the trend, you have to have it at two point one five. Um, and I know I said that wrong, my mouth peed a bit. That, that's kind of the cut score and anything below that is where you qualify. Okay? Um, and you can see that, and, but you can also see like in the Hispanic. That, that section, we're moving up, we're in the right. We're moving up. If you look at our English language learners. We're still way below, we've. Very little moved up. Our low income, we did go back down, and then in our students with disabilities, we've gone up a little bit too, so we're, we are trending in the right direction, this was in two thousand eight. Nineteen. Nineteen, because in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, we didn't take the SBA. Um, you talk about SBA and we. Are wondering how we can, you know, like, it's not a graduation requirement, but really also at the elementary level. Of changing that culture of having those kids understand that it's important, having the parents understand that it's important, last year we did a. Um, family night, and I kid you not, three parents showed up, okay, and they were all educators. So this year we're try, um, taking a different, um, we took a different, um, approach. And any kid that either passed the SBA or leveled up, so they went from a level one to a level two, we celebrated, we had a parent night. And, and we gave them medals and we invited the current sixth graders down because that's when they. Um, they're fifth graders when they pass the SBA, and we had, we were, we probably should have gotten in trouble by the fire department, it was packed. We had, um, over. What did I say, like three hundred and eighty people there? And that's the ones that we counted and that, you know, some of them slid in because they're a little bit late, so we had a ton of people there. And it was really well received and it was just one of those things that the teachers came and we celebrated. We, we celebrated, we have a little guy that comes in and he's like, um, and he was not there, but so we gave him his medal afterwards and he was like, um, I leveled up. And we were like, yes, you did, great job, you know, we were excited, he wears his medal all the time. And he's like, I leveled up, I'm the only one in the whole school that leveled up, he's not, but he, in his mind, he is the only one, and he's the, and because he wasn't there to see everyone there. He's also believes that he is the only one that got a medal, and so he is very excited, um. The medals were a big thing, and we get medals for reading too, but they, um, these were a little bit different, and so, um. So yeah, so that is in a nutshell, and you can kind of go through and. I think I won.
You haven't got questions?
I love your folder. Thank you, I will tell my secretaries because they really wasn't.
Find my spot. Oh, one thing I noticed just looking through twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three. Is actually from the fourth graders to the fifth grade had an increase in their. ELA scores, so I, I think, I think all the things that we're doing are benefit, we just need, we just need to keep rolling and, and. I lost my train of thought, but anyways, I think you all are doing a good job and, um, we just need to keep chugging. And hopefully we can get, like I said, get those real time data like you're getting. A, a better assessment of the tool, so thank you.
Yeah, and I do want to appreciate, I really do want to say thank you for, um. Purchasing ARC, we, I was able to show, actually, um, Director Wyman and Mrs. Casey, the writing that they're able to do. Is just improving, improving and, um, they're really excited and they're very proud of their work, so students are.
That's another, um, piece of real time data that we. From a spot, so. She's really trying to escape. Go try, Jody. Go try, Jody.
Nice try, nice try. Sixty minutes, sixty minutes, that's not true, forty minutes for hmm, now I'm going to be all flustered. Fifth grade has more, they have about twenty minutes more, I want to say. I want to say forty minutes and sixty minutes, so forty minutes for third and fourth grade, sixty minutes for the fifth grade. Daily. We just had a huge amount because I had to move classrooms um. And we've, we have restructured open door at Heights this year is in the past, they have all gone during reading intervention. And some of the kids, that's not their level of where they um have been giftedness. So Christine's done a great job of, she will take the students in their area of giftedness, if it's both, then this will take them. So during their reading intervention time, they have open door, if it's, if they've qualified in math, they've had math.
There's probably, it varies by grade and definitely in the lower grades, there's less in kindergarten, first, I think we have one kindergartner. To number, I don't even know if we got one. Um, but by the time we're in like third, fourth, fifth grade, there's between six and ten kids.
I would say, I think that we have in.
Some that might be a little bigger.
Of our schools for fifth grade. There's a lot, there's a lot in fifth grade between the two um.
Chris, we we'll talk about open door on a different tab, Christine is super.
She is super motivated and she, yeah, she's super fun and she is excited, so it's been a great.
Great, a great change, yeah.
The fourth grade math scores.
Yes, are not good. And if you notice, they could drop and that has been a trend um for years now. In fact, I talked to Kendra Wood, who's our instructional coach, because we talked about that and it's like this, like they just plummet. And it it's, and it's been that way for quite some time. So how we're fixing that is um, there, I cannot make teachers work with our instructional coach to do um mini cycles. But I can strongly encourage them, so and I have told the fourth grade team that I am strongly encouraging them. Because we want to keep our third grade scores, because if you look, they do drop and then fifth grade cannot, they can't make up the difference or they drop even lower. So if we can keep our kids at least where they are for third grade and make some movement for like forward, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in a situation. So we just had this conversation, in fact, today, again, as a whole staff, me um using some mini cycles, but they are. Um, Kendra's our instructional coach and they have all been um. Highly encouraged to work with her because we need to keep those scores and they're, we're going to follow that cohort cohort. So Kendra will work with those fourth grade teachers this year and really that's her focus. And then um next year, she's going to take that same group and work with the fifth grade teachers because we want to keep that group um continuing. She has done during our PLC time, she's done, we just had, in fact, it was just Jennifer, I want to say Jennifer Claus. Um, we're joking about it during our PLC because Kendra did a mini lesson. On fractions, our our kids in fractions just struggle and so she grabbed some manipulatives and they were going through and um. And she mentioned, the the teacher mentioned, she was like, I just did exactly what you showed me how to do, like, you know, and it worked. And so we're um, I could be to have the teacher name wrong, so please don't quote me on that, but um. So yeah, so that is been a focus that has, everyone's aware of it and I don't have a good answer, I don't.
But the fourth grade math, so you talked about fractions, is there intro to geometry or?
A little bit.
Okay. Already master multiplication.
Mm-hmm.
Division.
Mm-hmm.
So it's really kind of a step into more. We think that they're in the between from fifth grade math, that's where and then not getting a chance. Um, we just need to try, but there is a huge change of standard. Like the expectation of the standards for the third grade to fifth grade, the expectation just gets so much more complex.
So so third grade is like the culminating of K two addition and subtraction. Uh, they start in, but there's the start, the foundational piece for the multiplication. Um, fractions, so that's the third grade starts the foundation for the next grade band. And this is the crazy part of it. Fifth grade has a standard, so of all the common core standards, most of them are on a progression before there's required mastery. Fifth grade is the only grade level where where the standard is introduced and mastered in the same year. And that's multiplication of fraction.
And that is part of where we run into our eighth grade math and our tenth grade math. Because most things spiral and you continue to touch on them, the fractions are standalone. In fifth grade, in eighth grade and and they're not, they're not standalone, but the the standard is standalone. In its own way in which it's taught, they're not continually am spiraled through curriculum. I think it's fifth and eighth, right, Mr. Denny? Fractions are standalone in me. The concept being, right, we've continued to expand on our alphabet, right, as we go along and we keep going. It would be like all of a sudden in fifth grade, you're going to learn Chinese and then you're going to learn it only in fifth grade. And then we're going to do Chinese or we're going to do Japanese, I mean, it sounds crazy, but they're standalone.
Better reasoning for that?
We check with the people that wrote them. I mean, that's, but I mean.
We're being kind of silly as long as we've been here, but it it really is, there is.
You have groups of people that wrote standards, they're they're better than they used to be because they used to really be. Like you'd see elementary standards and just even the substance of them was. Shorter and you go and you'd have these huge middle school standards and then you go to high school and those are, that's some, the that with the common core that got better. And they may, they were more coherent, but they're still written by groups of people. And not necessarily in isolation, but yeah, you're working on the fifth grade standards and then they, so it. I mean, there's human error.
As a district, can we do something or are we just gonna keep? Down the same road, it 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 sounds like it's an issue.
Well, I don't mean to kind of look like, I don't know, I don't know how you would do that because when we, let's say we buy a course in the math. Think on that, that curriculum is written to that standard.
Yeah.
So that.
Adopted.
Adopted standard, so that math book you buy is built for that grade and it identifies that. So if we were going to identify and we're going to put stand fractions in third, fourth, fifth, right? We'd have to be adding our own units to those because the books don't come that way. Not saying we can't do that, but the the materials we buy wouldn't.
And some of the, and a lot of that's done anyway, I mean.
But I just meant that.
We we might be teaching things to third graders that are second grade standards because they need that, or you might have kids that are higher and they're doing fourth grade standards or a higher. Uh, a higher application of a third grade standard, so I I think it's just, it's a, with anything, there's, it's not a perfect system um. And.
Well, I I understand all that, but I. The spitballing here, but what what we're doing, like, seems like it's like we're just stacking, so I guess that's why I'm asking, like. Are there changes we can make to like, I don't want to throw a case on the bus, but back in fifth grade. Like, I I think you went a little rogue on math. But my son had him and whatever he, I don't know, what, whatever he did, it worked. I don't think he was following protocol with necessarily.
And I had your other son.
Yeah. Fifth grade math like sticks out to me because our son just struggled and then for whatever reason. He got it, so I mean.
Yeah.
Again, I'm just throwing stuff out like.
And I think that.
I can, I can, I can address that a little bit. Jessie and I had a tremendous amount of training. Outside of the school district um in mass specifically. Um, not only to develop content, knowledge, capacity. Um, of how mathematics build on each other, because when you come out with an elementary certificate. It's not based on math. I'm just being honest.
Well, I I chuckle because they don't prep you in any of our principal school, our superintendent school, our elementary teacher school, they don't prep us for what we do on the ground, what you really have to do.
And I've always been kind of fascinated by it, but we've, we've been part of grants outside OSPI grants, things like that and worked with some amazing people. To have the capacity to do that. What I shared with you. Is the workshop model that I used in that classroom. And. The number talks, we did number talks, we did rich tasks, discourse, huge discourse. We gave kids rubrics, they had portfolios, they scored themselves, that's teacher clarity, that's visible learning. Trying to replicate that. Build a capacity in our teachers so that we can, we can then do that. Which brings me up. MECC is is the company that we work closely with as we went through. There might be an opportunity here about in the near future of partnering with MECC. To build the capacity with our teachers. But I'm glad you brought that question up because that's what impacted us. We were evaluated, the state tracked us, tracked our demographics. We had independent people coming and evaluating, giving us feedback, we watched each other to become better practitioners. And yeah, our scores are pretty good. How do you emulate that and repeat that? I I don't know, I'm, I'm I'm relying on you guys in academia to, I guess, for that, but.
Not, that's what it's about, I, you know, we we can't change the standards, we can't change the progression of those, but what we can make an impact on is. Is what's happening in our classrooms and so, I mean, that goes back, like today I shared that. Teacher clarity is is my personal teaching philosophy, like it aligns to that. And so that's where I'm gonna, that's where I'm gonna put my eggs at, because I think that's important, we got to make it clear to teachers so that they can make it clearer to students. And they know the expectations and we can increase that rigor. That's what we can have an impact on.
Any other questions for Jenny?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, last one.
Last but not least.
Last but not least, I said whoever is going to go the first few is probably going to be the one that gets most of the questions and. I'll just type up in the back when I need to share something. Um, so I, you'll see our goals are very similar. Um, and if you look at my top two goals, one is around um our reading assessment. And one is around the math I read assessment, but the activities within those are very similar. So we talked about teacher clarity, that will um. That will happen, we're working on that this year, focused on ELA, looking at the learning progressions for our ELA standards for our teachers. Um, as we continue that work, then we will move that into math, but that is probably going to take, take time, okay? So that's not going to happen this year, probably not even next year, but that's, that's our um. That's one of our focuses. We um offering a monitoring research based intervention programs. So I'll talk specifically to reading for that, last year we had um. I'm going to call it a scheduling blessing, um, our sped students were in second grade, they had the opportunity to. Go to the sped classroom um with our resource room teacher, get or get Orton Gillingham in there and Orton Gillingham is a program that's really. Phonics based, um, it's specific for dyslexic students, but it's really good for all students. So they would get um OG of that classroom and then they got to come back to their cla- their classroom, their homeroom classroom, and then they got ARC toolkits during that time. And we saw within those students more growth out of them than um. Other students who weren't getting both of those interventions. So one of the things I said was that we need to do that with our students who are below grade level, so our students who are um identified as dyslexic. Or so they're a priority. And then below grade level, we would fill the rest of the spots, they are now getting Orton Gillingham for um reading intervention teachers. And then they're also getting toolkit time from their um, from their classroom teachers. And so we're, we're already seeing that those kids are making more growth than the the other kiddos who are not getting that OG time, so. So that's one of the areas for reading that we're really going to focus on um. For math in that uh research based intervention programs. My um math intervention teacher has kind of changed up how she's doing things and really looking more at the standards and the expectations of students. Because oftentimes what happens is these kids get put in intervention and kindergarten, they're in intervention all through kindergarten, all through first grade, through second grade, keep going, third, fourth, fifth. And that, you know, then then that's not working, so we we have to, we want to be able to get them in and then get them back out. So she's doing more focused intervention times, she runs like five week cycles, they're specific to specific standards. She sits down with the teachers, looks at the data, figures out what they do and then they select the students, she does her five week cycle and then out they go. And then she starts her new five week cycle and it's aligned to what's happening in the classroom, so. Those are two um intervention pieces for reading and math that we're really tracking um. For reading, obviously the implementation of ARC. We've spent uh. My, our PLC time, that has really been our focus is continuing to implement ARC, looking at our toolkit data. Um, making sure that we're giving students what they need and keeping up on those assessments so that we can continue to monitor exactly the skills they need and move them on. And then um. They've already talked about this, we'll benchmark for I ready, look at that data, what do we need to do and make adjustments, but it is just three times a year. Um, so that will be coming up in January. And then our last goal is on attendance, um, so you'll see some of those activities. Um, I will be honest that this has not, I have not developed an attendance team yet. Um, I have been doing it with my secretary, um, so that's something that I need to get going, but. Um, a lot of the things that at KRV is that because it's K two, K two students. The attendance issue is not necessarily the students, it's the parents figuring out resources, why is the kid not coming to school, do we need to get them on a bus? What can we put into place, so that's educating the parents on some of those things, so those are the pieces that we'll be working on um to help increase our attendance. And then our, my own personal goal, not on the school improvement plan, but is really working on, um, I know it's been brought up, but our kinder readiness stuff. Um, our data, looking at that, our our kinders, we talk about, how do we get that high school to have higher scores? How do we get the middle school to have higher scores? Well, we have to start building that up sooner. So um doing some outreach in the community and some early learning um, things to educate our our community on that. To help.
When we meet, when Jessie and I meet each month and talk about our professional goals and what I'm doing to help them, that's the pieces that we're working on right now. Where, how do we provide information in apartment complexes, how do we provide information in to um. Church organizations, how do we provide things, as we were joking, but we're serious, at the hospitals, how do we do them at the pediatric clinics? How do we make sure that they clearly understand what is needed at kindergarten on the day they walk in? Um. The one thing that we've talked about is regardless of how well we're doing in preparing them, we have to take everybody where they come um, within reason. And so what do we do, and and I say within reason and I, we've talked about this, but within reason, we have to take them where they come and so. What do we do in that? We talk about math intervention in second grade, but what do we do in the first six weeks of kindergarten? That helps build that bridge, that gap as fast as we can. So those are some things that we're working on to not only improve the readiness for the four year olds, right, or the three year olds, so the families know what to do. But what can we do in that first six weeks? Or I don't even want to put a time limit, on the first segment of time to exponentially grow those skills that aren't there.
And that piece is like one of my own personal goals, just through my evaluations, not.
Yes, that's, that's what I want, that's what we're talking.
Um, I I don't have an exact number on that, um, what I do know, I mean, I can talk about E cap and TK because that's, that's in our facilities, but so we have our two eighteen. Eighteen kiddos in each of our TK classrooms and then we have two um E cap. Two E cap classrooms um. So that in itself is thirty, thirty six kids ahead of where we were two years ago, so. Um, but I can't, I can't really give you a number on it, it's not, it's not that many. But I can't, I can't really give you a number on it, it's not, it's not that many. Probably um.
I don't know.
I would say handful in each class. Less than half, about that. I could probably say, I could probably say less than half in each classroom, so. I was talking to Brian today, like our TK kids, I don't know, Kevin can talk about this, but. You see them the first week of school, when those kinders are coming in, they're like, ah, I don't even know where to go, they don't know how to go through the lunch line, they don't know how to do anything. And our little TK kids know exactly what to do and they're like the leaders in our school and so. It's, it's exciting for me to see that.
Kids that were in TK last.
Last year, yeah. And so as kindergarteners, um. I'm excited for that because I just know that like my eighteen and then I. You know, Kevin has some of mine and he has some of his, so like those kids are just gonna be leaders in our, in our schools next year, so. The more we can build that, I think is great.
Have a question on. Uh, I think, and I don't know if this is the right number for twenty-two, twenty-three, but. Like sixteen percent are, sixteen percent of our kindergarteners are. Developmentally and academically ready to enter kindergarten. So could you speak to how you get from sixteen percent of our kindergarteners being ready for kindergarten? To having a seventy percent proficiency rate in ELA and a fifty-five percent efficiency in, in math?
Cause I have fantastic teachers. Um, so that, that sixteen percent of, um, I was just looking at this, so that sixteen percent. Is students who are ready for kindergarten, kindergarten in six areas. So, so that would mean that they have met, it's like social, emotional, literacy, math. Um, physical. Cognitive, and I'm missing one, anyways. Yeah, um, so it means that they have met. The stand, the expectation in all six of those areas, so. That population isn't very high, but our population that has met five or four of those areas is a lot higher than that. So.
So sixteen percent is probably not.
I mean, like I have it pulled up, whoops, I have it pulled up right here. So twenty-two percent of kids. Met it in four areas, twenty percent in five areas and then sixteen percent in six areas, so four. Four of the six, yeah, four of the six are at twenty, forty, like about. Twenty, forty, sixty, yeah, sixty, I'm a math teacher in that.
Yeah, the only thing it is, is that they could be ready in the four areas that aren't math or reading.
Yep.
Or they could be ready in math and reading, but.
Can't stand in line.
Yeah, can't get along.
Don't have five motor skills, can't, you know, so it, it's, it, it, it is, so it's not, yeah. It's a little, it, it's not a, a total measure to say, oh, well, there's four, so that's close.
Yeah. We talked about the jump of standards from third grade to fourth grade. And I feel similar with standards from like Kinder to first two, where Kinder is a lot more prompting, supporting those kinds of things, and so they have that. They have more scaffolds and more support in that, and then they make that big jump to first grade. With, well, where some of those scaffolds and supports are, um. Not taken away, but not, but not tested, yeah.
We'll have a little bit more data too, based on the TK, they say two of this twice in the year. They do at the beginning and the end. Unlike kindergarten, say, kindergarten has to get started with the California State Standards. The TK programs. Have some more data in the spring. About the ones that we've had going into kindergarten.
We can also look at the TK kids for last year to see how they entered.
Well, that would be an interesting one.
Yeah. I could look at that.
That would be the TK students that we had last year, how many of them met all six?
So when we're talking ready for Kinder, is it always? How many are meeting all six?
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the number you would see in, oh, like on the report would be. They meet all six, yeah. Well, evidently we. We have two, that's right, at sixteen percent.
You know, but four, four to six at fifty-eight percent is probably a.
Sounds.
Realistic number.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, than the sixteen, cause you look at that and you're like, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's cognitive, language, that's the one we're missing, letter C, math, physical, and then social emotional. Those are the six areas.
Any questions for?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the Orton Gillingham. Is that just offered as an intervention? Sounds like you had a lot of success with it, so I guess I'm, I'm curious. Why that's not just like part of our.
Yeah, yeah, um, and it is, uh. So the reading intervention teachers do teach that, and so two, I have two. One point seven five reading intervention teachers. And then a halftime bilingual intervention teacher, and then I have a resource room teacher. And so all four of them use Orton Gillingham as their program in their classrooms. Um, we have had a lot of success on it. The thing with it is that it's about, um. Uh, we go three, three students to one teacher, so the ratio of it is a lot less than you might see in the classrooms. Um, it's a lot, a lot of like, um. Focus around letters, letter sounds, like phonetics, and so, um. That's what they do and they, there's a certain grouping of how the letters are laid out. So they might be only focusing on five letters for uh, like a month. And that's all they do for those five letters all month.
Uh, that's what those kids need.
Yeah, and that's, that's what those kids need, so.
But we would need about. A hundred more teachers.
Yeah.
Does the ARC that you learn teach phonics as well?
Yep. Yep, and they, we just had some big changes in our, um. Our lower level, our yellow and green kits, which are, which are kindergarten level um, toolkits. And that's where kids are getting their, their skilled groups, so they're specific to the skills they need. And the changes that were made were a lot around those uh, phonics pieces, so we're excited for that. Um, but now we just need the new materials.
Yeah, when my kids were in elementary not too long ago, I swear there was no phonics, so this is, that's exciting.
Yeah. It's, it's a great change.
There was talk of the new curriculum of bringing back spelling test to the curriculum at the school, has that happened?
I think in, um, I've seen them in first grade, um, they're around words that they practice, that they're kinda. Oh, no. Not power words, what's there?
Something you know, like a weekly spelling test, you got your seven words, fifteen words.
Yeah.
You know, on Monday.
Yep. Yep. Um, so I, I have seen him in first grade, um, I don't think it's like, um. The old school way of spelling words where it's like a bunch of random words, I think it's more focused in on. I can't think of the word, what is the thing that they do in their morning message, they have like a.
Well, the, the words that they're really focused on are, are the ones, part of their word study book and then also. They're seeing it in context. So they're using that same word in context and also spelling it. But there's also strategies when they're learning their phonics, even in OG and things like that, that they're. Doing sensory stuff with spelling them and, and getting those sounds down. Uh, like the true spelling test, like we've seen when I was growing up. For growing up. It, it's, it's evolved a little bit more so that they're actually seeing those words in context and also learning how to spell them. But not necessarily a true spelling test where they get this list of words going home and then they come back. That are just isolated.
So they might be.
Yeah, I think too, the witness.
Yeah.
Spelling.
They um, have word study books and so they might be working on like a specific spelling pattern in their word study book. And so they work on that, they practice it throughout the week. They'll see that in their toolkit work or, um, we have morning message every day, so the teachers are writing a morning message out and so those words are incorporated. Incorporated into that. So it's a little bit more intentional spelling words, I would say. Potential test.
Are spelling bees still on game?
Middle schools have spelling bee? Have they done that since COVID?
We, yeah, we just left the spring.
The competition.
Science, math, spelling.
Yeah. But I don't, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
It's limited number of participants because of our league.
Yeah. I haven't seen it, it, it in elementary, but. The athletic, the middle, mid, the middle level league, like athletic league does academic competitions too, so that's where that comes from, the middle school.
What are homework expectations in elementary school?
Reading.
So in, yeah, in all of our, in ARC, part of ARC is, um, we have reading steps and so they get four steps a day. So how you guys do it? Okay, four steps a day, so we'll make sure we're aligned. Two of them are in the classroom and so that's during their independent reading time. And then they get two steps outside the classroom if they read, so it's fifteen minutes for each step, so the expectation is that they're reading thirty minutes a night. Um, and then. There's a way that teachers are collecting that information and then we input it into ARC, so you can look at. Like you have a kiddo who's not making growth and it's like, well, why, why aren't they making growth? Well, they have no reading steps, so they're not reading at home, so that's something that we need to work on with them. Um, so that's an expectation and then in, at my school, um. Each of my grade levels sends out like a monthly newsletter, um, monthly homework, kind of, or weekly homework kind of thing and it has the reading and it. Has some math in it, um. Just some like things that they're already doing in the classroom that they just practice at home and then they bring it. Yeah. Yeah.
And is that consistent every class?
Yeah, for my first grade and my second grade, yes, so whatever you see in Mrs. Foster's class, you're gonna see Ms. Davis's class, the exact same packet. Um, in kindergarten, you'll, you'll see that weekly in first and in second grade, in kindergarten, they don't do weekly packets, they just do. Um, I think just a monthly reading log, so.
That are held back. In kindergarten, say, in the last three years, so.
Hmm, in kindergarten? A handful. I mean, probably ten or less.
It'd be like, just, I mean, I went, I went to kindergarten twice. I wasn't ready. And so, you know, to me, it would seem like rather than to push them ahead. To do that at a lower level would be smarter because then gives them a chance to actually.
Yeah, yeah, we, we do, I mean, we try and look at that and try and catch them as early as we can. Um, we have like, um. Can't think of the name of the. Survey. Like it's like a. Is it survey? You give them questionnaire kind of thing, you put them on a rubric, the teacher fills it out. It looks at a lot of different things, so like they're, not just their academics, but social emotional, how old are they compared to their peers? Those kinds of things, because at some point we don't want nineteen-year-olds. Twenty-year-olds in trying to graduate high school, right, so kind of looks at some of those things too. Um. Can't think of the name of it.
Ult- ultimately, uh, the buildings do make some recommendations for kids that feel like should be held back. But it ultimately is apparent to see.
Yeah, it, it has to be a, yeah, the parents can bring it up to us and then we can have a conversation about it, we can bring it up to the parents too, but they. They are the ones that have to make the final decision.
The teachers are recommending that. Necessary though, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Ever make that recommendation like early in the year, like maybe your child's not quite ready to start Kinder? Recommend to like wait till they're six?
Yeah, we have, we have those concert, conversations with parents, especially with kids who are. I would say more socially, emotionally not ready in that aspect, like. You know, we're a month into school and your kid's still crying all day and, you know, we've tried all these things and we've buddied them up and, you know, tried all those things and so we have those conversations with them, but. Um, at the same time, we have to do it very. Um, softly. Um, because it's, that's their kid and they get to make that choice, we can't. They, we're, we're just not gonna take your kid this year, you know? If they're, if they're five and, then we, we take them, so.
It's your spur of the knee on when I was. I wasn't happy with that.
Yeah.
But, you know, by the time I was in third grade, I was in advanced reading and, you know, it really helps. And so. I mean, it seems like you were involved in the younger ages.
Yeah. There is, um, I mean, like on some of that. I'm probably talking too much now, I'm way over my time, um, but there's like, there's laws around that where like K. K three has less ratios student to teacher so that those students can get more support. So like my uh, student to teacher ratio is different than at Jody's building, so. That's helpful, I think.
Any other question?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank all of you for being here patiently and Brian, you were the first to go and. Thanks for hanging out.
He's like sitting back there, sitting pretty for the rest of these four, so.
Uh, last but not least is the LCAP plan.
Uh, so this is really reflective of what the buildings are doing, so I don't know that, that I need to speak on it a whole, a whole lot. The big difference in here is really more about the district's MTSS's plan, which is. A two-year process as we're working on, MTSS stands for multi-tiered system of support. And this is a, a system where you think of it like a pyramid, at the base of the pyramid. Every kid gets all of these things academically and for social emotional support, so we do things like. Advisory period and everybody gets financial aid support and everybody gets to have, um, gets lessons about social emotional behavior. Everybody gets these academic services. Um, students that might be struggling either uh, socially, emotionally or academically might go up to a tier two where there's some more supports for those students to be successful. And then it can go up into like a tier three, very top of the pyramid. Um, for instance, would be special, a student with special education would be at the top, the smallest number of kids that need the most amount of support. So we're working on that system, we have a district team that's working on a district implementation team, the abbreviation is the DIT. I don't know if that's the greatest abbreviation, but that's what it is. Um, and we're working actually with a, with a mentor or coach out of the ESD. Um, and we actually just met with her and did an evaluation this week that is helping us with setting our goals. So this is a process that'll take two years, so it's a, it's a big process. But it also supports what the buildings are doing around PBIS and, 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 you know, attendance is part of that and. Um, it, attendance, interventions, our counseling, our social worker, all of that are pieces on that. That pyramid, so, um, other than that, the, you know, reading goals, the. Our, our plan, honestly though, is we have our strategic plan, it has way more than this in it, this is, um. State, uh, state expectation for title one, um, so, um, but there's a lot more work happening honestly than. Just this, so.
Thank you, any questions for Diana? Well, I would entertain a motion to approve all six.
I would make a motion to improve items for school improvement plans, um, subset I, double I, triple I. I B, B and B I. It's all a reminder that I am all the same. I probably also would have said them incorrectly.
Oh, it's okay.
Go here a second. Second. Then moved in second into approved school improvement plans, I'm gonna go one through six. For the sake of time, any other discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, moving on to item five is WSU and Prosser School District Bridge Program.
Uh, so we've talked about this previously, but maybe not since our new board members, the Teaching Bridge Program is a program through WSU Tri-Cities. Um, that we're a part of, we have a class here taught by Val Baker, careers in education, kids are getting um, dual credit for that. Uh, college and high school credit for that, they are in, um, they do some learning with Val and then they're assigned to teachers' classes. And so the Teaching Bridge, so that's, there's things they're learning, WSU provides some supports, but ultimately what happens is. That we will have two spots. If a student chooses to apply and go to WSU Tri-Cities, wants to become a teacher, wants to work in the Prosser School District. We would employ them as a, basically a substitute para for a couple of years. And then the idea is they would come and work for us as a para and then into their student teaching for two years. We have a first right of refusal on that because we don't have a position, we don't have to hire them. Um, but it's a great opportunity, we've been trying to do the whole build your own program. We have a lot of people that, from our community that have become teachers, para educators have become teachers. They're already working with our kids, they're skilled, they're some of our best teachers. Um, that we've, we've hired through the WSU Alternative Route Program, so this is like expanding it now down to our kids. You're our kid and you wanna be a teacher and you wanna come back here, cool, so here's, so that's the, this is the opportunity for them. And we continue to offer the class and partner with WSU Tri-Cities. And then if they choose to go to school or apply, we, there'll be two spots that they could apply for, for our district. And anybody out there, even if you aren't going to WSU Tri-Cities and you wanna be a para sub, please apply.
Is that a paid, um, is that a paid position?
Just because they'd be para subs, so they'd be working. Just because they'd be para subs, so they'd be working as a, as a sub. We would try to make something, maybe, we, we'd see if we get, because they have classes, they, it could be daily pickup, or if there's something that works. Yeah, they have to go to class two days a week, so, or they have two days a week, they could come and work for the first two years. And WSU has set the schedule specifically, so they have two days off, so they could work in schools, which is the best way. If they're not working in schools, if they're not working with kids, they don't.
They get disjointed.
Uh, or they don't, they're going into something they have no clue. And honestly, the teaching, the careers in that class, there's kids, I go in and speak to them every year. There's kids that are like, oh, my gosh, can't we be a teacher? And their kid's like, oh, this is good, but I'm not gonna be a teacher. That's what's.
Actually, what it's for too, because you don't want their family or them investing time in becoming a teacher, and they've been working on it, and then they teach for two years, and they're like, I'm tapping out. I'm not doing this, so.
So it's, it's a, it's a really cool opportunity. It doesn't really, um, yeah, it doesn't necessarily really provide us money or, or funding. It's an opportunity for our kids.
Need a question? I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I move to approve the agreement between Washington State University and Prosser School District Teaching Bridge Program.
Right second. Been moved in second to approve the WSU and Prosser School District Bridge Program. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Twenty Seven dash twenty-three. Declaring surplus of ramps and stairs.
I'll just be real quick with this. It's really a formality. We're taking off apart some of the portables, and all of those have ramps and, and things on them, and it's really a shame to put them in a pile and have them go to waste. That's as simple as it is, meaning somebody or a business or something can use them. If we pile them and they get bent, or they get whatever, aluminum doesn't get straightened out like some things, and so, as they come off, we're trying to be respectful of the money that we spend, and we'd like to be able to surplus it to the public.
And we can't use them in any other capacity?
So we're, we're keeping a couple for possibly the reworking of the graduation stage or something like that, but I think when we're all done, there's gonna be like seven ramps and eight sets of stairs. I mean, you know what I mean? Because each building has a ramp and a stair into each one of those portable, so there's quite a few. So I, I just don't, I, what I don't wanna see is a pile back in the corner, and four years later, somebody's hauling it off to the dump.
Yeah. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Seven dash twenty-three. For a second.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution Twenty Seven dash twenty-three declaring surplus of ramps and stairs. Resolution required, a roll call vote. So Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And I too, a vote aye. Motion carries. Um, moving on to item seven is appointment of the four. Oh, yeah, appointment for the for and against committee.
So I'll be real quick on this. There's actually two documents. There is one for the EPNO levy and one for the capital levy. We did not receive any con, um, requests, which is really good for our district. Um, and so tonight, it, it really is time sensitive. So as soon as we are done with this, I'll share with you, then Selena will send it off to the county. The individuals on the pro committees will get an email from Benton, which is the main county, which is also CC'd to Clickattack County, and they will tell them how to do it, the turnaround for their statement that goes in the voter's pamphlet. It's two hundred and fifty words or less. We did get that number today, and it's about a five-day turnaround, so that it's ready to go to print. And so that goes out there. Um, we have a, um, Prosser for Quality Education Committee, which has three names on it on your document. And we learned late this morning that we needed another committee for the, um, capital levy, and Adrian Gonzalez has chosen to be our pro committee member who will write that statement for the capital levy. And so those are the documents that we'd like you to approve this evening.
Um, I have a question. Even in the updated, revised agenda, I don't see it filled out. Was it supposed to be filled out? In the agenda?
Um, I thought that, I'm sorry, that I thought we did scan and send them in. They have the names here. We could pass them down for you to all look at. Um, yes, so here are the two documents, and it's filled out, so I don't know why you have a blank one, but there you go. And we can make sure that that gets on our website.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure. Okay.
Anytime we, and I, and own this, but this is partially with the county and state responsibility, anytime we do anything quickly, um, in trying to meet deadlines that coincide with our gates, things sometimes get kind of messy.
We will have this as part of the minutes.
Yep.
You'll have the.
The correct ones. That's what I'm saying. We'll make sure that the, the website agenda has the correct items, and then the minutes have the correct items in them.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion for the appointment for the for and against committee.
I move to approve the appointment for the for and against committee.
For a second. Been moved in second into prove the appointment for the for and against committee. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next up is vouchers and. Are there any question? Hearing none, I would entertain a.
Second.
Moved in section to vouchers and payroll, payroll. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to consent items, uh, one through three. Questions? I'll entertain a motion. Second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve cons- the consent items. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign, motion carries. All right. At least it's your turn.
My turn?
Yes.
She's been very quiet.
Uh, okay, so my, um, reports are month end for September and October. Um, so we have officially wrapped up twenty-two, twenty-three, um, and these reports are just stating our financials for the months of September and October. Um, each packet has a budget status report for each fund, um, and each report shows our revenues and expenditures. And then I also have, um, a spreadsheet, um, for general fund, and, um, as you can see, um, and it shows our actual enrollment. It shows all of our revenues in property taxes, a portion in state grants, federal grants. And then it has at the bottom our expenditures. And then, um, on page five, there's a graph where I'm comparing the last three fiscal years for September, and then also in the October packet for October.
Question?
Yes.
On the spreadsheet, and I do like the spreadsheet, even though I know that's not part of the, um, the actual financial statement, but under, in the spreadsheet, it has seventy-five thousand for September under property taxes. But we're at eighty thousand, one twenty-seven in the, uh, September financials. And it, and it does the same thing for October as well.
Okay, so local, local property taxes and local taxes are different. So, um, so the local, the local taxes include, it's our, um, I'm having a great fart. It's nine. It's our, um, it's our levy money. The levy money that we get paid, yes. Um, and so it's that, it just shows up on a different code in the expenditure report. So it's.
Are you talking about revenues or expenditures?
Revenues.
Oh, I'm sorry, revenues. Um.
Sorry, I, I, I heard a difference in words, so.
No, you're fine. Um, they're just different. So if you, if you want it, I can, so you can see, um, I can send you the expenditure report that, where I get the numbers to put in that in the spreadsheet themselves. So like this one thousand on the actual budget status report under local taxes, it's not the same as the spreadsheet. So if you look at, and I, I can send it to you just so you can see, but our actual expenditure spreadsheet, or not, uh, report, it, we have different account codes for different kinds of taxes. Um, and so there's, I, and I believe, don't quote me on this, I'll have to double check that, there's two numbers in that graph, but let me pull it out to double sure.
So what you're, let me restate what I'm hearing. So the number that you're seeing in the spreadsheet is seventy-five, and what we're seeing in the report below is sixty-one or something?
No, in the financial report, the budget status report.
Yep.
It says actual for the month and local taxes was eighty thousand, one twenty-seven and change. But I go to the spreadsheet, and it just has property taxes as code thou- one thousand. Uh, code one thousand in the budget status report, it's like a five thousand dollar difference. Seventy-five versus eighty.
Oh, I see what it is.
Mm-hmm. Um, I'd have to look into that and get, get back to you, um, to get you a more clear answer. Um, but what's on that budget status report and what I'm showing on this spreadsheet, it's coming from, coming from the same system, but two, two different sides, if that makes sense. Um, so where I get my numbers on this report, at the end, the end amount matches what our budget status is. It's just where they're, where they're coded to in the revenue votes. That makes it different.
So maybe you could bring that and show.
Hmm, yeah, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Show it or, um, screenshot and send it to one of them?
Yeah, I, I'll be more than happy. I'd run it right now, but it's like a thirty-minute report to, to everything. I don't think they want to stay here that long.
But I, I think those are the things that we need those questions from. Does that make sense? We need those questions so that either, that the, the hand-done in-house report matches the other, so that we can make sure that we're transparently reporting and sharing those items.
And I think for clarification for new board members, um, this spreadsheet is, is something that
Craig started.
You, or Craig built, but you're utilizing, because it's easier, it's easier to read.
Yes.
Um, than the budget status report. Um, you know, it's got fancy colors on it and all kinds of stuff, but, um, most of the time, it reflects the same information. It's just easier to read. So that's it. Prosser School District thing. Any, anybody else have any other questions?
I must not have what you're seeing in my packet, but I'll look later.
I'd be happy to show you.
I shouldn't have declined the, um, iPad.
There's a lot of paper.
I saw, I've got paper here, but no, I think I have some, um, like, I think it was probably.
Orientation.
Changes. I'll just look at it later. Yeah, fine.
Have one other question, but I might hold off for. Thank you, Delisa. I appreciate it.
Oh, you don't have a question?
Um, I, I don't know.
Oh, look at her.
All right.
Did I, did I miss the second part? I'm sorry. Did I go back?
I got, I do have another question, now that you wanted it. Um, looking at the ending fund balance, when we get into the details, um, that'd be, I think it's page two of the budget status report.
You're looking at September, October?
Uh, September, October, I think, is relatively the same. Um, we're get, when we, even we have the, uh, ju- uh, what do you call it? Um, the minimum fund balance policy at, what, I think it was five percent. Is that right? Um, and that's, that's the two point two million dollars, correct? Um, we're really close at two point two one nine. Um, I think that's something, you know, we all need to be cognizant of when we look at these, is how that, um, that unassigned fund balance is basically earmarked for our rainy day fund, uh, by policy. It's not supposed to go under that. So. That was, I guess it wasn't a question, it was a comment.
And I think that's really, really important. Um, in our policy, it is a flat number. Um, often it is a range. Um, and I think the policy in, in, to be very honest, you've been looking at this as long as I have been the superintendent. Does that make sense? So there is some language in there about the year end and whatever. We're not supposed to, we should be able to prove where it's gonna return if it's, let's say we drop fifty thousand below that number, right? Let's hope that never happens, but let's just say that happens. Do we know, or can we express how it's gonna change for the next month? Or do we have to identify it and tackle it immediately because we don't see it improving? And so do you know if that's a yearly number, or is it a month?
I don't know.
Do you know?
I don't remember.
So, and, and the reason I'm asking that is that's really important, because we don't ever wanna break that policy. Does that make sense? And so if it's a policy that when we go to approve a budget, our fund balance projection and our, and the real camp below that, or is, and I truly don't know this answer, that's why I'm bringing it out publicly. I don't know if that's a mu- like a a live number, or if it's a, does that make sense what I'm trying to ask?
I think it's more of a year-end number, that, um, you know, as we budget, go through the budget cycle, like, you know, we're, we're not going to budget into that.
Into that number.
Into that number.
Okay, and that's what I interpreted as, but I just wanna make sure it was open, because you were talking about new board members. That's the goal, and that's where we sat, and that's our policy, and we don't budget into that number. But sometimes when we get nine percent one month, we get twelve percent, and we get five percent, sometimes it does this.
Yes.
Until it levels out for an average.
You know, by probably January, February.
Well, I'm hoping by February, we're on the other end, because our enrollment is up. So when we get our, but January is what's called the balance month, so we're paying on what our budget is, and then our budget is, we're doing better than our budget, and then we get that money, and then we should be out of that problem area.
But by January, February, we'll have a good idea how we're going to finish.
Yep.
The year.
The year, right? So we'll be able to look at the ending fund balance.
Predicted.
Predicted ending fund balance and see how we're jiving, and you can predict that by August.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Lisa? All right, Deanna.
Yeah, it'll be fast. Uh, Christmas families, we, we are in my office supporting Christmas families to help a Bethel Church, some other organizations, also unaccompanied youth. About thirty families are individual students that are unaccompanied, that are getting Christmas support with, um, things for their, for the kids, and maybe even for the family. Um, we, Tom Dentials is sponsoring a toy drive for us. We'll be, we'll be going with a bus to pick up those toys at eleven on Friday. If anybody's available and wants to help with the toy brigade, feel free to stop by Dentials at eleven on Friday um, to join us. Mm-hmm. Um, they do a, like, kind of a social media thing for them too, and we'll do some of that as well. They, like, they, they give us a lot of stuff, and then we get those out. The counselors have kind of a plan, and they distribute those to families and to kids. And then, um, today, we had our introductory parents bar training for our certified staff, and starting in January, teachers will be required to post at least once a week to get started, so, yeah. So that was. That's part of that top-down piece. Here's your monthly report. I'm only, because of time, I'm only gonna, you can. And that's that's part of that top down piece. Here's your monthly report. I'm only, because of time, I'm only gonna, you can read it. Everybody can read, but I'm gonna touch on just a couple things. Um leadership, go if you go down to, well, the facilities. Um depending on how long you've been with this, this um big push from Jason and Lisa have been to me, we have to know our. Where we're at with our facilities. And so we received a study and survey grant for thirty six thousand dollars. To look at every inch of our property and make a plan for taking care of it. You'll notice that we also received five thousand four hundred and forty five dollars for what's called a natural hazard grant. Um I don't know how many natural hazards here, but it is something by O S P I that we have to do. And so when they're doing the study and survey, that same organization will do our hazard and we be able to check the box. We we don't have to pay for it, we get the grant to be able to do that. Want to tell you that. Um the other thing in leadership, I think there's big things that you need to understand. You heard it tonight. I'm meeting with each of the pe- principals. Every month, at the same time, we have goals, we have things that we're working on and we're really pushing um the accountability. Of of our principals, which then in turn push accountability to our staff. We did our second A W S P training last Friday, really working on how do we grow leaders in voice, in body language. And in um. Looking at the two of you, voice, our body language and how we reflect on ourselves and how do we present ourselves to others. Um then finally, the other thing is my written growth goals and evaluation too will be to you at the study session for you to. Um I'll have him to you probably late this week, so you can have them long before the study session. But you'll see how they're written out and what they're ready to go and then Jason and I'll meet on one-on-one to make sure they're all in line, but you'll have them to go for.
One real quick thing, the minimum fund balance, five percent, the range of four to six within the working year. So for instance, you know, maybe we have a big property tax tip coming, so it might drop a little bit, but it's gonna go back up the next month cuz we get a big payment. So four to six, but it needs to end on five. If it goes below that, then you have to apply before if it's.
You're a hero.
Thank you.
Just look up the policy.
I know, I just didn't have.
I know, you're busy, it's okay, I got it, I.
I knew there was something about the cyclical and then you have.
Yeah.
Thank you, Deanna.
Quick question, Deanna. So on on your monthly meetings with the principals, um when you have some. Like during the the school year, do you sit in on staff meetings with the principals?
Yep. So I'm just in in the strangest way, I evaluate them just like they evaluate teachers. So I went to Rick Follett's um C T advisor or meeting that he had. I'll go to staff meetings, I'll go. Um debrief, they may debrief with the teacher on their evaluation, right? So we're we're working as a team to grow and develop. I'm gonna use Brian just cuz we've met today. Um we're working on scheduling, we're working on how do we improve things. I'm sharing from my past experiences, what we've done, how we, ninth grade success, how do we um change the fourth year of the math? We talked about how to add the fourth year. You were mentioning calculus. How do we do stats one year and calc one year? And how do we rotate that so that we can get the biggest bang for the buck, so that you know when you enter as a freshman. You can take algebra and then geometry and algebra two, your sophomore year together. And then you can take stats one year because you know that next year's calc or you take it calc as a junior and the senior year's your stats, those kinds of things. So we're, go ahead.
First thing I say, the principal, I really appreciate that, including us, I didn't want to swap partners today. Um I I feel like there's a difference between Kevin Gilton and Jesse. Um and you know, passion over there, connection is there, and we'll really go along. We don't have to get the opportunity to add thought partners, so now having thought partners is really nice.
Good.
Hey, with uh with that, um any other discussions, comments?
I think Blake has your computers for you.
Oh. Uh so future meetings, we'll have a safety meeting December twentieth for um. Prosser High School Room two oh five at five.
Do it right back here, in that classroom, right back there.
Um and I think, Elisa, you're on that, correct?
I am.
Did we nominate another person for that?
City, no.
Is there anybody that would like to be a part of that?
You're always welcome to come.
For Frank, I'm sure Frank.
T arm wrestler. Okay. We can paper, rock, scissors. Um okay, so that'll be next Wednesday at five. Study session next Wednesday right here in the library workroom at six. With that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.